This conference will now be recorded.
So, and we have supervisor's presence present in the room. Bob Decker, myself, Doug Banks, Tinkel, and Flavius here, and district manager, Chris Schumaker. Attending on virtually online is Bill Guy. We have to go through it.
Yes, a motion to allow full participation by Mr. Guy due to exceptional circumstances. Motion and approval.
Is there?
What do you need?
A motion by the board members who are here to allow you to fully participate.
I see.
Make the motion.
We have a motion, second, motion is second. We'll call the vote. Chris, are you calling?
Do it.
I'll call the vote. Are we doing individual votes or can we do a group?
We can do it as a group if you like.
Okay, we'll do it as a group. All in favor?
Aye.
And the opposed? Motion passed. Five zero. Chris, we can start with, we'll open it with President Leeds. Great, now we remind everyone that if you've got a phone, please make sure it's on view. And the chairman just requested that everyone in attendance, whether it's in the audience or sitting on the board, that we all make sure that we act in a special manner and have respect for the proceedings. Any scheduled speakers today, Chris?
We have one, Lauren Davies, Stony Brook Parkway.
Good afternoon, Lauren Davies from Stony Brook. I'm a member of the Stony Brook Advisory Committee. What I'm going to talk about here for a few minutes is a information only. We'll get more information as we go through this. In 2015, September of 2015, Stony Brook Parkway was completely redone. That had cost around $70,000. Right now, it needs dire need of repairs because of the oak trees that have tore up. When they did it in 2015, they did not address any of the trees. The contractor only trimmed off the roots at the asphalt line. We have already started the program. We have two phases. Phase one is the trees. And we had Anchor Tree Service, which is contracted through Gateway, to come out with their staff and evaluate the trees. And there's probably about 40 to 45 oak trees along that pathway. Of that, they chose nine to take out. And when we take the nine out, they're the ones that caused a lot of the damage. In addition to that, they're going to put in 290 feet of barrier in areas where the roots are close, but at this point, not a problem. This, again, is a fix, will not cure the problem. I think oak trees cause a lot of damage. Those of you that were here when Kenny Hall made his presentation on oak trees damaging water lines, it tears up driveways, pathways, and about everything else around. They go out 45 feet, so they really tear things up. The trees we're taking down are pretty much trees that have a lot of roots outside the ground and the ones that caused most of the problems. They'll be taken out in such a way that if they decide they want to put another tree of some type in there, we can do that. But right now, the way they're, of course, I wouldn't see that being an indication.
Hey, Warren, is Stony Brook looking at either from an HOA perspective or even from a residents' perspective? If there's an oak that is within a certain distance of either driveway, sidewalk, or some type of utilities, if it's removed, that it got to be replaced with something other than?
Yes, yeah, it don't make, wouldn't make any difference. We just want to put oak trees back in there.
Is there something formal that's coming through the HOA?
Not that I'm aware of. Just aware to them that this is what we were doing. And if they want to replace those trees, they can do that on their own, whatever it happens to be. All the trees coming out really have no effect on anything. Ones that are close to the pathway, of course, will come out because they're the ones that causing the damage. But there are some that are further back, too. I think that Anchor has done a really good job in positioning these and making sure that we can justify each one coming out.
Are you talking about paths being sidewalks internal to Stony Brook?
Yes, yes.
It doesn't exist.
No, no, it's the pathway that goes from Gateway Boulevard to Greenstone. It's about a mile long, eight foot wide. It's a workout path. It's one of the-
Typically the right white top, not the concrete side. Typically, the rightaways of the back sidewalks and the back sidewalks.
Yeah.
Are the trees in the rightaway of the HOA or are they in private property?
You'd have to look at the line and see what side of the line. The line goes down through there and there are some on both sides.
Because your covenants and your development may have requirements for-
They've already checked-
shade type trees if it's on private property.
Yeah, they've already checked all that. Yeah, we're good on that. And that's what I talked with Anchor about, and when they come out with the arborists and stuff to make sure what we were doing.
Yeah, I'm surprised with the oaks that they're not considered more invasive with their root system when you look at like this and some of the other roots. I mean, the oak roots are almost-
They're bad.
We take out 10 to 12 oaks every month in Gateway through the desire of you.
We do.
10 to 12 for damage.
And we're getting to the edge, too, where-
I live in the village. And when our build, they put one oak tree in every front yard. Eighty-four oak trees, right by the two meters from Gateway. We, about five years ago, we have 83 taken out. We took out all the oak trees. One lady didn't want to do it. And about two years ago, it cost her about $6,000 because she A) had to take the tree down on her own, and then B) she had to fix all her water lines.
And I'm having the same problem where I've got one foot of my driveway that's adjacent to the sidewalk, and it's starting to push the driveway up and the sidewalk, and there's utilities.
Yeah, and that's what we were concerned about, about that aspect of it when they did that. There's nothing along that runs along there except the irrigation line, and that's further out ports and street that's on the street side.
So are we needing to approve anything?
No, not yet. I'll get to that in a few minutes. The second phase two is the paving, is fixing all the spots. And there's around 55 different areas along the pathway that need to be fixed. It sounds like a lot, but we're not going to redo the whole pathway just for the fixing spots. We're reviewing proposals now from vendors, making sure that we're matching things right. Everybody kind of did it a little differently and figured out how much they were going to have to do. And that's where we're going to have to come back. That's why they discussed information also next month when we come back looking for approval on some funding. You won't be surprised that this is coming up. As I say, this project will smooth it out. We're going to put, we're going to seal it. It's never been sealed. There's just a lot of things that have not been done right. This will not be a cure-all. It's still going to happen, but hopefully we're going to recommend a maintenance program to help keep that going so we don't end up with another $70,000 bill every five years to fix this pathway.
Who's preparing your plans and specs for this?
I'm sorry?
Who's preparing the plans and specs for this work to bid?
That was done by the HOA back in January, February.
Did they hire a firm?
No, they did not, no.
Who did it?
No, I don't know. We picked up on, the advisory committee found out about it. We picked up on it and we're moving forward on it because right now it's a liability issue. We have a lot of spots that are six feet.
So, damage areas.
Yeah, we're just fixing it. Yeah, it's already been, yeah. The two companies, we're looking at two different companies, asphalt companies that we have to get down to and make sure we all have the right square footage. Path goes, they pretty much, what it is, eight foot wide and go the length from Stony Brook or from Gateway Boulevard to Greenstone. And it's about a mile the way it perched around.
All asphalt?
All asphalt, yes. So, as I say, in January, we hope we will be on the agenda to discuss this. And we'll have the, everything that we need to get approval from the board because it's going to be more than what could be passed off on a purchase order or something because we're looking somewhere probably $30,000, $40,000.
So you're putting out bids?
Yes, yeah, we already put the bids out. They got them back, and that's what we're looking at now. Because some of them, as typical, and as typical, we have one saying one thing, one saying another. And basically, the square footage they're going to repair is what the big concern is.
Well, that's what my concern was, is that somebody wrote a spec that we're, both companies are all, all companies bid on the same thing?
Yes, yeah, and that's what I'm making sure of right now. I've talked to both companies and we had them redo them because some things have changed. So we had those that had posted. We gave them more information and stuff. We got those. And right now, the two, the two that we're considering right now are way off only on square footage they're going to repair. How they're going to do it, what they're going to use, the sealings they're going to use, all that stuff is the same. There's nothing there. It's just we're trying to come down to the square footage because there's a big difference cost-wise. And that's what we're trying to figure out, which is correct. And I've been working with them to get them out and make sure they do that.
And you're working with two bidders?
Two bidders.
And who are the two?
Bain and Atlantic Southern.
Do you have budgeted money for this?
There's funding in the leftover from 2018, 2019 budget and 2020, 2020, or 2019, 2020.
So you have the-
So we know there's some money there, but before we commit on it, we want to hit, we have some other resources we're trying to get into before we come back. That's why I said, come January, at the meeting, we'll have a breakdown of what's going to go. The last time they did it, the HOA put in some money, and so they split the costs. And that's what, we have to find out if the HOA is going to do that again. We have new people on the board, so you don't know what correction we're going to get. So we don't expect available in Gateway if we need them.
Does the HOA have a capital reserve?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, Warren.
Thank you.
That's no other speakers, Chris?
We have no other speakers and nobody online that would like to comment.
So we'll move it south towards district passes.
Yes, a couple of things. And Russell Smith is not here at the moment, but maybe we'll get into later on into the management report. If you recall, the last board meeting, there was, I mean, two meetings ago, an agreement entered into between the district and R W C I, our board trades three, that there would be no utility services until such time as the district received these in appropriate form. Or officially, in this case, that's a rightaway agreement in the city of Fort Myers with construction plans and specifications that was approved by the district engineer. And when R W C I signed it, after that, right around the same time, from a land banking perspective, and developers do this frequently, there's another entity involved that now owns some of those lots or some of the land in our board that's to be planted. So two things have to happen. One, the plant's going to be revised to reflect this new entity out there. And the agreement needs to be amended to include this new entity. So you have the district, W C I N R, and the new entity is being obligated under the agreement to have and construct the utility line and get the rightaway permit from the city. Utility lines to be constructed in accordance with district plans. I think the discussion was, Chris, they'd be hardened, I guess, in the rightway so it wouldn't be a need to relocate the future hallway.
Yes, so they put them in casing when they go onto a roadway, they're required to do that.
And so I've got a major revision sent back to Charles Mann and Russell Smith. I'm not back until, Russell was here earlier, he stepped out to make a call, and he said, "Yeah, I'm in good shape with that." And I know it might be a board meeting in December 17th, we're talking about grabbing the workshop. So if there's a board meeting on the 17th, I think Lennar can move, wait until that date for that to occur. But that's in the hopper, just so that you know. It's just a matter of any additional party obligations to comply with the district's requirements. Been working with Mr. Tinkel and Schumaker, Steven Damson, Phil Roadner, Phil Meesing on the issue about the construction road, emergency seagull road, it's all to preserve. We've had some good conversations. And right now, it still seems if the city still wants an amendment to DRI, but we're going to try to convince them that they do not need one to achieve this. And then it becomes an issue. Mr. Tinkel may want to report on it later on even more with regards to that. Now, let's see, there's other issues. If you want to wait, I have some comments on some of the items under the management discussions. If you can make the comments now or wait until then.
At your preference.
Oh, thank you. Under the KO Ploin, and an email I sent to Chris on that, Chris proposed that the district, we work with the developers of KO Ploin to secure an easement for a new 16-inch forest main along the property boundary. And that's page eight of the agenda packet. And in consideration of the easement being granted by the developers to the district for this new 16-inch forest main, the district will provide $10,000 in utility connection fee credits for the project. And as Chris mentioned, we'll save $3,000 in construction costs related to the roundabout. My concern, as I expressed in email, Chris, was connection fees, parking packages. They can only be utilized to pay for increased demands on the system or increasing capacity or providing additional capacity for new units coming online. I associately talked to Mr. Tinkel. And Chris, my understanding is that the 16-inch line will replace the six-inch line and the 12-inch line will provide more capacity. So you're actually providing additional capacity in the wastewater collection and transmission lines, I suppose?
Yes, yes, it is. I mean, in that mind, it will be a new line to replace it because the existing lines have to be torn out as part of the construction of the rightway.
Correct. Yeah, the replacement would not qualify for connection fees, but if this new line would increase capacity to accommodate the new demands by additional units, then in my opinion, you could use connection fees. I'm trying to clarify that. And also, my opinion is that those are all board policy decisions. And Chris's manager has the ability and latitude to walk and negotiate these, but I think they need to come back to the board when you're dealing with credits, especially connection fee credits. So based on what I've understood today, I'm fine with the legal concept, provided the form of the documents are, when they come back, those are acceptable.
We're working right now to get the survey from the folks over at KO on that project.
But then do the survey, that's very-
What they're doing as part of it, and the line will be also, and out of the rightaway, Gateway Boulevard, so if there's any future rightaway work, they'll have to pay to relocate our line. They'll also add some safety to that because our valves will be out at the intersection and a lot easier to work on where it is. We're actually in discussions right now with the engineer or Tetra Tech, depending on the development schedule with KO. We may move ahead and put that in ahead of the roundabout.
It's that number, but good. Are you looking for a motion then of the board to authenticate what Chris is proposing?
No, I think it is work authorized, Chris, finalize those negotiations and come back to the board with the agreement and/or the easements to voice replacement. Are we there?
No, we can bring it, we'll bring back the formal document for you. And one of the reasons, too, besides the advantages, is if we move that line north, whether it's a fee we offered for that easement, we'll be saving between $20,000 and $30,000 on construction costs. So we did it with the cost benefit in mind.
I totally agree with you. So that's one out of the, we should probably say the next meeting.
Yeah, well, it'll be a meeting or two when they're done with the survey and we get the agreement, easement agreement hammered out, they'll work out there.
What we do is, as we're going through this action, we use cap those as, maybe bring back to the next board, just any pending part in lines.
Sure.
Chris, on that one, just so that everybody has an order of magnitude that we're talking about, that development's got, what, 210, 220?
Yes, sir, 221 units.
Apartment units? And what's the connection fee charge for them?
About $5,700 per unit.
Per unit? So we're going to be bringing in a mass slow here, $210,000?
Oh.
And we're going to use $10,000 of it to offset this?
Yes, sir.
Every day of the week and twice on Sunday?
And also, we could pay for the easement directly just out of the construction budget, but it sounds nice to the developer when he has some connection fee credits.
Yeah, and again, you've got the appropriate test to be met, the connection fees and that work out.
Good.
Nothing further until we get into the documents later on? Yes, sir.
Tony, I have a question about the arbor wood. Can you go back to that a little bit?
Yes.
Previously, earlier this year, the board made a decision to make some changes in the permit criteria manual to upgrade the manual to the point of where Pelican had been so that future developments wouldn't be impacted. At the time, the comment was, "Why do we want to do this? You're done." And the answer was, "Well, for any future communities, to make sure that the developer was responsible in the permit manual, put in double wall down spout plumbing for homes on ponds, to put in irrigation in the ponds that would be at a rate of one turnover per 24 hours and diffusers would be no further than 100 feet apart." My question, as if this wasn't a question, is arbor wood going to be held in that standard? Was the manual changed?
No, the manual requires amendments to the rule because the permanent criteria manual was adopted by rule. Any changes have to be by rule.
And that's what I thought was done earlier this year. You're saying it wasn't?
No, that's my knowledge.
Okay.
Now, it is important, that's a good point to bring up, that we do need to achieve that because I think we've recently got an email, Chris, somewhat with regards to another development on Tree Line, I think like the west side of Tree Line, that will be coming in shortly. And then to the extent that KO Ploin also has not yet committed to the approval of that criteria.
Yeah, we're reviewing KO right now.
Because it should be done for all futures, at least in bio.
So in order to update the permanent criteria, exactly what action has to take?
It's a two-step process. One is, board authorizes publication of notice of rule amendment and says that board will be considering adopting amendments to permanent criteria manual. The second step after that is adopting, publishing a notice in the paper, that's in the paper, indicating that, this is the reason why I'm going to go over, that's going to be in the paper, indicating that the district will be adopting amendments to permanent criteria manual and they are available for review. What I would suggest is that, I can't recall, we had the actual hard document, I don't recall it, Chris, but-
Tetra Tech has the permit document.
Has that been provided to district staff or?
No, sir, we don't have it. And I thought that they were going to bring it back to a meeting of the board to adopt that part of it and then move into the rule side.
Well, no, it requires rulemaking to make that change. What I would suggest then is that we put on the next agenda, the board to review the strap and to authorize the notice of rule development and then authorize the publication of necessary advertising for public hearing.
So, because I think it has been a while since we've had these discussions, I'd like to get the boards, to be honest, what I'd like to do is maybe have, put together some type of permanent criteria review committee with, see if we can quickly address what has been identified previously. But also, let's thoroughly kind of see if there's other items that we need to include in the permanent criteria, if we're going to go and look to go through the process of making alterations or adjustments. And it's-
Yeah, it's pretty much, right, please, don't overlook that.
And I don't want to drag this out. I'm saying if we're going to do it, let's just do it in a few minutes and look and see if there's other areas to address. I know that you've had some issues with permanent criteria. So, you know, that's what I'd like to do is see if we can get a copy of the permanent criteria out, if we can get staff, have a point of contact within staff and see if there's anyone, if probably someone that you can recommend on the Pelican side, and if there's anyone else within the community that, I mean, most of our active participants are now sitting on the board. That would likely be prime suspects for a committee like this. But if we do know of anyone that we would tap on the shoulder for a quick review, a quick thorough review, and let's see if we can maybe set some timeline to have this review take place and then get this processed in so we can approve.
Yeah, would it be appropriate in the workshop that we have in a couple of weeks? You can't give any direction, but you can discuss it. And that workshop might be a normal meeting where you can take action, agendas, discuss it at the workshop. And one thing-
It obviously is so large that it would be staying on the topic.
Yeah, if we're going to go beyond the ponds publication, I agree.
And again, that's my only concern with, like, similarly, if our workshop would put it out, see, anyway.
I'd hope to do it in the one we have coming up. The board members can't do it, work on this. That's correct. And difficulty is also in the standpoint of-
But if we split, so if we have the permanent criteria and we split components of it.
No, I would say you can't do that. You're trying to do indirect, you can't do direct. Because it is one manual and it is all, it all works together. There's cross reference.
Cross referencing.
Yeah. You're not going to get anybody in the community that knows a tinker's damn about this thing.
So we're going to have a workshop, so, because I think we've got the three members that are not only a participant and some amount of experts in-
I'm very comfortable for the ponds part. I'll be happy to write that, if someone says I can, but I didn't have any other interest.
And I still have what other, what other areas that we need to address. So maybe before we, maybe before we say, hey, this big workshop or whatever, what's it about, are there other components that need to be?
Or I think the staff can take and get with the engineer and who's got a history of the things that have needed to be changed, put together a list of all the topics, of issues in the manual, what need to be addressed.
Yeah, and I think what the board may also want to consider, only because of the timing that we do developments, if you want to try to have them subject to new revision, they would need to be in place as soon as possible. Now, arguably, you might be able to say we're going to impose more form on any approvals pending a review and completion of amendments to the permanent criteria manual. That always gets a little dicey because that's to be a reasonable period of time. But what the board may want to think about for the workshop is criticality and priority. It's through what, right now, where the priority, I used to add in the downspout shredding, that may be, okay, let's just take care of this now, then work out on some more global approach.
Yeah, that's what I would like to do. I know that segment, we know a reasonable proposal put to the board.
Well, the other problem you got on that is when you get into these associations, you're going to get in conflict unless their association documents and covenants permits some of this stuff that we're talking about doing. We can sit here and legislate all we want, but if their covenants don't allow it to happen, we'll have to create another one.
I understand.
And that's what we're, that's what we have had historically in the gateway side. None of our covenants, at least the ones I've seen, give any authority to do what you guys have done at Pelican, that you started here.
Well, you know, and I look at a simple thing, like providing collective capability to the pond, so that if future erations put in, the developers will have to put it in. That was a really simple thing, but it was half of our cost.
And that's a major item?
Yeah.
But generally, it's not.
It's, it's, it was enough.
So just the volume, Chris, you can now just slide and give a feedback. So Chris, can we have staff quickly evaluate what has already been identified? Get with Tetra Tech, see, is there any other items that need to be addressed? If there's nothing that is critical, then I think we do a phase one review, and then we stay it up, ongoing review, let's see what additional items need to be.
Little later, more delivered.
So, you know, and honestly, this is what we should be doing for all of our manuals, is just having quarterly or biannual reviews and then having some type of change your enhancement schedule, you know, where things are brought forward and we're making these adjustments on a reoccurring basis.
For the most part, we only have two parcels left after this.
I didn't know if there's any, I didn't know if we'd venture back.
We have two parcels left.
But I think the long range view is, once everything is developed, you may have redeveloped it, or you have redevelopment after destruction. I mean, just a redevelopment with knockdowns. I mean, not only knockdowns around Lee County, but Myers, there's a Kazimina. People buy a piece of land for a million bucks, knocked on the house, it's 20 years old, build a new one. That goes on all kinds. It's amazing. And so then you have new standards you need to come up with the code. The commercial centers for example, typically, if you have older commercial development, shopping center, you want to come in, redo the whole site development plan, you need to come up the snow on landscaping, sidewalks, multi-modem, all those kind of things. I think that's the long range view that we're talking about. What do you want to do on redevelop?
Because I think it's, Chris, I think we have the action.
Yeah, okay. And with the C5, which could be coming in in the next couple of months, which could be critical to that, it may be appropriate to move forward at the next meeting, get that authorization and move on that in January for the same time.
Set that whole family to the west side of the tree line.
Yes, sir. That's 164 units.
I was surprised to see that when I saw an email, like, they need a commercial just toward the back, 40 acres, it's going to be coming next.
Yeah. Next is district engineer. Danny, you're online?
I don't think Danny is on.
Good afternoon, everyone. This is Stephen Agapi. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, Stephen.
Hey, we don't have an update, but if you guys have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them, and otherwise, I'll just stand in the line in case anything comes up.
I did, Stephen, we were talking about the permit for Pelican for the road work, and you and I discussed, you know, submitting assistance and probably construction supervision.
supervision. And I think they have, I think they have most of the bids in place, but if you could move forward to pay those permit fees so they could get the permit, and I'll, I'll talk to the folks over at Pelican that are running that to see if we need any bidding, but we may need some construction management and permit closeout, so I'll get, I'll get with you on that and we could bring it to the next meeting.
Okay, in regards to getting the permit, it's really on hold by the city until a contractor comes in to pick up the permit, so, I mean, there's like $30 in fees that are left over. They were just generated when they, you know, approved to release it, and those fees are for the bond that they're going to have to review, that's going to be provided by the contractor. So I think usually a contractor would go in and he would pick up the permit and, you know, provide a bond and pay that $30 fee, so.
Okay, all in good shape. And if you could also send over the last iteration of those revised items for the permit criteria manual?
Sure.
And then I know that Tyler and Danny have been going over it, I don't know if you're involved, that if we could get that, we'll get the ball rolling on that also.
Okay. So to circle back on the Pelican Preserve Road, so do you want us to prepare a task authorization to assist with bidding and construction management?
I think, I think they have all the items set with their vendors over there now for the concrete work and the landscaping and the tree removal, it's really just going, and even the sign installation with lichen, so I think it's really just the striping on the road.
Okay. Well, I mean, if they're going to just handle that themselves, then I don't think there's a point for us to get involved in that. I mean, we have a couple of hours left to close out the permit with the city, once all the construction's done. I mean, maybe we can use some of that hours to, you know, make sure that the striping's done in accordance to the plans, but we don't really have a lot of construction management time in our current scope.
Okay, I'll ask, and then we need to do in a minute, but I'll, I'll get with you next week.
Okay.
We're just doing some signage and pedestrian striping over in Pelican Preserve at the intersection. And Tetra's been involved doing the design and the permit work, and this is folks in Pelican found out some of those minor projects, the engineering and permitting costs more than the improvements you're going to make when you get into road signs and striping.
Moving on to the office of the district manager.
Okay. And I have several items in the report, and if you have any questions, but really significant ones, the roundabout at Commerce Lakes is moving forward, the utility work, we'll actually start next week on that. And if you've been down there, you'll see a large number of trees that they pulled out, cut stump grinding, and it was a little nervous for our staff while they were ripping those big oak trees out because they're sitting right on top of the lines.
Do we have any issues?
We, we had one change order with removing some additional trees that weren't on the plans, and there, there was an item in the bid specification, it's probably about $10,000 that the contractor put a claim in. And the other issue that was brought up at the construction meeting this week is they did relocate a water line because it was going outside of the right-of-way line, it's moved and it has some conflict with another line, the irrigation line. And right now, it's, it's staggered so that that work is separate, so they would actually have to shore up one line in between. We're looking at some ways we can avoid any additional costs related to that. And we're, we're meeting with the engineer, Fred Mittel, with Tetra Tech on a weekly basis, there's also a weekly construction meeting out there on Wednesdays.
Okay, I'm getting in this joint lately, but as, as I understand it, the way this was bid, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the way this was bid is there was conditions, specifications, and again, this is a workmanship issue, means and benefits, construction, something that engineers don't do, you don't want to get involved in that. And as I understand it, it was bid with the understanding contractor, you know the work has to be done to facilitate the work totally. So you bid whatever tree removal needs to be done as part of your bid, in other words, as part of that lump sum item. So if that is indeed true, there is no grounds for a claim for extra $10,000 in my inflation absorption. Now, I have not seen the specification, I have written that type of a specification many, many, many times in the past, and as far as I'm concerned, tough luck, guys, the ball, the pencil was in your hand to determine what you needed to do the work. If you needed to take out 10 trees and we only had five parked on the drawing, that's not our problem, that's your problem. But if it didn't say that, then that's a different story, but I was simply understanding that it did, which raises the question, I wouldn't ban the $10,000.
Okay, we'll, we'll get the more detail on that, the exact claim, and we were looking at that where the tree removal wasn't shown on the plans and it wasn't a bid item, it was clearing and growing up and it was in the specification.
The question I've got is, was it specified the contractor was responsible for including in his bid all work necessary to do the work? If that's the case, he's up pretty glad.
Which means walking the site and see.
Yeah. If they were a unit price, that's a different story. But if it's a lump sum bid and it told you to include everything you need to do, you're done.
Yeah, typically the bid will say that contractor wants to visit the site and inspect the premises typically.
Oh, that's, nobody leaves that out. That's a mandatory.
And this is down like a latent issue on the surface, it's above ground.
Yeah, yeah.
The tree's on the premises, it's visit.
So I'd like to check on that because I have a harder time, you will get contractors coming to you all the time. I didn't include that in my bid, but my favorite deal is tough luck, not my problem.
And Chris, just regarding the roundabout about the new school, I know there was some questions around that, as builds or whether it was surely built to specifications and some of the, some layout, anything ever come to that?
We made a request for the as builds, they weren't available yet, but I'll follow up on it. When I asked, it was about a month ago, Mr. Tinkle, you asked about.
Do we, do we know was that design, such as was on Kelly Road, do we know that that was approved by Kelly, that's set in progress?
I would assume it had to have been, Mr. Tinkle.
I'd go through Randy's search results. I'm sorry, I would have had to go through Randy's own. It's an absolute joke, a joke of a design.
It's a real choke point.
Do what?
It's a real choke point.
It's a joke.
Where do the actions start off?
If you liked that road and that roundabout, you will love the next two.
Chris, keep going, please.
Okay, sure. Besides that, we're moving forward with our construction inspection, our work both in Pelican Preserve with Hotwire and in Gateway Greens with Comcast. Today we had our third water line hit in Casella and the water was shut off to the residents, and even though previous hit, we told the contractor to leave the valve alone. Once he hit the line, he went and shut the water off in his own accord. So that's been an issue out there, and those residents will be going through their third boil water notice, which is time consuming for staff, you know, to be out there. And we're also monitoring, Brian's having some work done out there tomorrow, where there was a breach in the pavement for a bore that they did, and we're just checking, getting some engineering.
They're lucky, their valves work.
Yeah, well.
Yeah. Well, Casella, they're still relatively didn't, that's five years.
So that, that's moving forward, and we'll be looking at fixing that. The one question Ryan brought up was, was there a void under the road that contributed it? So we're doing some compaction testing before we let them repave because we may be getting Lennar involved in that, some of this defects and subsurface, and that engineering testing will tell the tale.
If you could keep, keep me posted on that because of the demand, it needs to be made in the statute for a 58 type of construction defect, the level of specificity it is needed.
And since that's still all under construction, we wouldn't have this file committee.
Right, doesn't, so that's why we're very sensitive to it. Comcast and Gateway Greens is moving forward, we've had several, you know, number of issues out there. We did make a repair claim for $10,000 to repair a storm drain out there. We've had a number of other minor issues hitting service lines under driveways and areas where they aren't marked. I was out with Mr. Tinkle and Kenny the other day, and there was a sewer lateral that got hit, and the person's lateral came out and made a 90-degree turn, went partway through the front yard, made another 90-degree turn, but it was hit about 12 feet up into their yard, it was within our easement. Comcast was out of the area working then, and the lady, when she had a sewer backup, called a plumber. Typically, we've asked them to call us and, you know, or the contractor.
It does.
Yep, and the HOA, and at least notify us because we could have gone out there and probably fixed it for $60, and the lady got a bill from her plumber for $1,750 to camera and cleaned the line out. And the Comcast guy ended up putting the sleeve on and actually fixing the break, the plumber really wasn't aware of what it was.
The $10,000 claim, who did you send that to? Comcast, so I can follow up, did that go to Trouts?
Yep. I sent it to all three of them, and I sent the locate tickets where they were going to drill it a depth of 28 inches, and also mentioned that you talked to them and our inspector talked to them about that. So, and after that, we did take some extra effort too, even though the storm drains are pretty obvious where they're coming off the road and the runway and marking those. And I think they're using pink flags.
Yeah, and defense, our guys that are out doing this work, as Chris identified on this, with this double dog legged surface ladder, if you had sat there, unless this guy was getting paid by the foot years ago to install it, there is absolutely no reason to come off your house, turn 90, turn 90 again in the mailbox and go into a sewer. No, it would have been a straight shot into the sewer than, than only happened there. We've had the same thing in Hanting Greens that was more catastrophic because the, the hit was right underneath a paved, paper drivel on a million dollar house. It was a mess. And the, the guys going out and trying to locate these utilities are as built or worthless, they're just absolutely worthless. We have what, over on Wellesley Court, we have an eight-inch water main setting on top of a 36-inch sewer that goes into a drain box.
Setting an 18-inch.
How much?
18 inches.
18 inches. And these things are supposed to be five feet in the ground, and they put it across. I mean, the inspector that was there before, it had been Stevie Wonder, I don't know how you prove something like that. I guess it's just lucky that WCI isn't still around.
And the utility has legal duty to protect, protect their property and, you know, be out there working, but right now, with our $40,000 construction inspection bill, about $15,000 in damages and considerable, I would have to say, a couple hundred hours of locate time and repair time, you know, we're probably going to do it for about $75,000 on the utility side. It's, it's very labor intensive.
Welcome to Florida, if you don't have good eyes.
And.
Pretty typical for us.
Put a slight update on the Pelican Construction Road, where we're continuing those discussions and moving forward, and had a call the other day with Tony yesterday at 5 o'clock with the parties, looking at financing options, construction options, and I think Mr. Tinkle's going to bring that forward at the next meeting.
Yeah, I think the one thing that I like to have is it's going to be a discussion, and I've heard it mentioned when I was on the outside and haven't heard of it setting on the boards the last four years. Explain to me and everybody this impact fee deal. I am so confused, when somebody tells me that you pay something for an impact fee, that money goes into a fund, and I was not aware it adds stipulations of use.
Back in 2011, I think, WCI received a certificate of occupancy for the fire safety station at Tree Line. And that was a commitment and obligation of the development order under the DRI for Pelican Preserve. The bond issue was revised and amended previously for Pelican, the first phase of Pelican Preserve, the bond issue is, to allow for payment and reimbursement to WCI of the cost of that fire safety station. And in return, WCI was to get fire impact fee credits, but because the district reimbursed WCI for the construction, the district was assigned the fire impact fee credits attributable to the cost of the construction of that safety station, totally about a million four. And then those, the initial expiration date was 2015, it's been extended, I think, until 2025, to be able, have the district able to sell those or use those fire impact fees within the city of Fort Myers. I can't recall if it's limited to the particular zone, some places it is owned, but might be anywhere in the city of Fort Myers. And the district retained the services of a broker that can be, I think, terminated on a relatively short basis to market and sell those impact fee credits. Usually they're sold at a discount because, once again, it's a market, the other developers out there that have access of fire impact fees over the number of units they've built in their community, they may have an impact fee credit. It's a ledger the city keeps, it's a ledger, it's a fire impact fee credits, they were services CDD now, and it's been drawn down upon over the years. I think Chris most recently got a copy of it from Glennis Perks, I think.
Yes.
From the city, showing how much is left in that fund. It's not a cash amount, it's a credit against, if I'm a builder, I go to the district if I want to, or somebody else, and say, listen, I'll buy $100,000 of your fire impact fee credits for $65,000. And the district might say, yeah, because at least, you know, get, get some cash in which can be used if you're still remaining bonded and indebted, needs to pay off the balance of the bonds. And one question I've talked to Mr. Tinkle about was, Dellicheck and Steven Bloom wants the outstanding principal balance of any other Pelican Reserve bonds, some city center bonds. And to the extent that there are, there's excess cash, I'll call it, from selling those impact fee credits at some point in time, what can those funds be used for? Probably generally just for the first phase of Pelican Reserve. Impact fees are a cost to pay, it's like our connection fees, if you have a need to expand infrastructure, increase capacity of infrastructure, build a new lane model of road.
But it's based on a calculation, that's a very cost.
There are formulas, yeah, I'm saying, building a single-family home has this impact on our fire safety systems, so we have to, X number of personnel, Y number of vehicles, X per feet of building reach, new single-family home, and here's the cost, we've got to check it out, you know, all these numbers go into it, and they say, if, an impact fee will cost you $2,000 to save for a single-family home, just point a number. And so a developer will have to pay that along with water, sewer impact fees, water impact fees, school impact fees, unless you're in the 55-plus community, you know, pay school impact fees. But by virtue of all, because of rationalism, you're going to have impact on the school system. That's it.
Years ago, that used to be true.
It sounds like it's a nice clear.
But that's just what, the district has this pot of credits that they can sell and market, but the proceeds have to be used for a particular fund to pay off the bond, I guess the question is, once the bond's paid off, what can those funds be used for?
So in any of be freed up. So if you had, in that particular case, let's say that fire state was a million dollars, and you had a thousand users in Pelican Reserve that was going, that were going to be taxed this impact fee of a thousand each.
Or each build, each time, when they apply for building from, build a house.
I understand.
It would be charged impact.
So, so let's say it's a thousand is calculated that way, that generates the million dollars, that million dollars then goes to the county.
The city.
I'm sorry, city. But the city, in exchange, offers a credit for doing this system.
No, no, the credit was for building a fire safety station, so that's the impact to the fire system in the city of Fort Myers was addressed by virtue of the construction of this, and so there's an excess amount of credits available.
Well, who finances the building, the developer or the city?
The district. The developer built it, the district paid, the developer, the district kept the credits.
Okay. And we just got to find out what Steven Bloom says.
Yeah, that's just part of the discussion we're going to have, is to the extent.
What this has to do with is the fact that this road is going to be, we've got some estimates that we preliminarily come up with, very preliminarily come up with, oh, about $400,000.
The emergency rate.
The emergency rate.
So what then, can we use impact?
The issue is, can the Pelican side utilize the fire impact fees to offset their share of the cost?
Or is there a way to cash them in to be able to have excess of funding? The other difficulty is, the bonds were issued and debt service assessments were loaded upon the properties only in first phase. So the question is, can?
Yeah, that's logical, it's just a matter of can we.
Yeah.
We were restricted in using the bond buddy.
The first phase.
For our pilots, to only use the first phase. And all the pipe prepared, and everything, the new sections, we, we bore that cost.
Yeah, what, what? Yeah, what what, we assume for safety discussion that there's, again, if the bonds are paid off and that this money then comes in with people buying the credit from the district with a pot of money then. Can that money then be used for other capital projects in the first phase of Pelican Reserve, say, which will free up some other cash in Pelican Reserve to pay for the.
So so the issue is, we got about one point five billion of credits.
I'm not sure.
That's the last number I saw.
Well, there's an adjustment to just a bit.
I don't know. We're talking one, if you're quoted one P or bond.
I'm just talking about what Steve was asking, came up with, but whatever the number is.
Who's pretty much.
Who's our potential buyer of this?
At all, personally, say.
We've had a couple, we've sold them a couple times.
And we need to advertise that we have these to sell. I mean, I'm not going to be nothing good that I see.
We have a broker out there that you think hopefully being incentivized because he gets commission when he sells them. The board may want to relook at that and say, let's find somebody else.
Because that that money to me is just absolutely, I just got sitting there. We've got to be able to, yeah, sell that.
If we're selling it, if we're for selling it, that's going to lower the price versus when they come to us at one.
The other side of it is that, as I read in one of those documents that you sent, this, there's a clock ticking on this.
Twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, and if twenty twenty-five goes by, it just basically evaporates.
Well, unless we get another extension. We had that extension.
From twenty eleven to twenty fifteen, twenty fifteen to twenty twenty-five, correct? How how long they going to go? My thing is whoever is working for us to to sell these, let's tell them and turn up the plane.
Chris, do you know who was the broker?
Hayes. Pat Hayes, and I I asked him this week for a status report and update when he thought about the market. Because our last sale was almost a year ago, and the realized income was about fifty-six thousand dollars, and that goes right to Pelican in their account.
Fifty-six thousand on the hundred?
Was it about seventy-seven?
Yeah.
Okay, let's let's.
Yeah, what, what's your? He's trying to make a presentation to the board.
Be that, that's that's good money. It's not doing a city good where it's set.
So it sounds like Chris is all about that, a plot pressure work, work here. So, can I think we're utilities now?
Well, before we leave. Question on the C five residences, which is on the west side of Tree Line. Early on, we saw some discussions or plans for someone requesting permission to vet that pond in that community, Strongwater, south towards, south towards Flowway. And we definitely don't want to do that. We want it to go north towards the Wind Dixie Shopping Center. And I don't know who addresses that or who looks at that for us, the district. I want to make sure that that plan doesn't go rolling down the pike and we get stuck with.
But we don't have a plan yet. They've done some, Tetris done some preliminary review of that project. And we're waiting for them to submit the actual plans for.
Tetra Tech or Lennar?
It'll be Lennar and their developer submitting plans to us through the permanent. No, Delisi Fitzgerald is working on that.
Is Stephen online? Steve?
Yes, sir.
Hey, did you hear that discussion on that C five to make sure that I totally agree with Bob? That Stormwater that's went off of that, what it is, forty-eight?
It was Lake Eight, but it's the surrounding.
Yeah, Lake Eight, that that flow, that flow goes north into the Flowway.
Yeah, behind the Wind Dixie Shopping Center. No way.
Right. I've got them a set of plans in front of me right now. It looks like they they submitted them earlier, I think, like maybe a couple of weeks ago, and then Chris forwarded them to us. It looks like right now they have everything going east under Tree Line, like directly across from the C five parcel, which then goes south into the Flowway.
Say it again?
Um, they submitted plans, and it looks like the current plan right now is to send flow south to the Flowway.
That's what they want to do.
We wanted to go to C one Flowway in Colonial.
Okay.
I get another question, Steve. Have they submitted to South Florida?
Um, to value, blah, blah, blah. Um, I don't know. I didn't see like any, usually like I can see like what they submitted to South Florida. I don't see it in this package that I'm like looking at briefly.
What what name do they give to other C five residents? I'm trying to figure out, looking forward online to the permitting for.
Pelican Reserve track C five.
Okay, thank you. Can can we ask Chris to formally send a letter to Lennar as the developer and the engineering firm? I've never heard of these guys. Delisi Fitzgerald?
Oh, they've been around a while.
Sounds like a wheel tanker.
I think Delisi was on the one that's yet divorced.
Post. And and tell them that, hey, this this that, this this isn't our hunt here. We don't want that water going north. Last thing we want is any more water going south.
With any sort of gals in there.
Well, first of all, I can't you get it south anyway. I don't know how you get it there.
It's much closer going north.
So what is that, are we eyes on this? Is it staff or is it Tetra Tech or?
Well, I think that the the letter going to offer, well, I think it needs to come from Chris and copy to Tetra Tech so that they know what we're doing. If it comes from Tetra Tech, I think it needs something more official from the board saying, hey, we we're not going to approve said plans. It's going to show water going south.
So we're informally, informally, the Pelican Reserve box group made that note the minute we saw it, and that's how it got it.
So staff needs to send the letter. Tetra needs to keep eyes on it. To make sure it doesn't progress too far down the line without it being good and good that the district gets adamantly opposed. Our engineers are, you know, basically at the gates.
Well, I'd like to see how they even were miraculously going to get it to go south. The only way they can get it to go south is to go back east into Pelican and go because otherwise they had to tear up the road right away and right down through.
Going back to school to the paddock is the way I think they have it going.
Do you want?
Going back behind the school and down through the paddock after you go through Colonial. That's how they were planning on sending it down.
That's crazy.
I know.
That's crazy.
Okay, um, okay, moving on, just, do we, I said utilities, but I think it's business manager.
Laura Leroy, Business Manager. Don't have a lot of updates, just mainly giving you guys a heads up that next month I'm going to come ask for some money. So a lot of money, it's twelve thousand dollars. I need to figure out where it's can come from first. That's why I don't have an agenda item for this meeting. We've had a lot of issues with ADT, both cost wise and service wise, and we're not able to get service at all from them. I did have someone come and give us a bid to redo our security system, and we'll be able to drop three of our phone lines. Everything will be cellular, so we won't be dependent on on any phone lines. We'll be able to get rid of three century, like century link lines. This is to replace the DVRs, the camera DVRs here in in our office and at the pool, as well as add some cameras at the pool. We only have like two or three. This will give them a lot more visibility around the area that's, so they can see better what's going on.
Is this cloud based? The how are we going to be backing up the video?
It's, the DVR is huge. I'll have to check if there's cloud too, but the DVR is huge. You'll be able to capture probably two or three months worth of data on the DVR. Yeah.
So we'll have it centralized.
They'll have their own at the pool, and we'll have one here. So we'll have, each will be separate. And then they, because ADT is proprietary, we have to replace both of the access panels for the card readers at the pool and the dog park. But we'll we'll be off anything proprietary going forward. So if we decide we don't like them as a vendor, we can just get someone else to do the monitoring for us. This was the only vendor that I was able to find that did security and fire. Most would do security or fire, but wouldn't do security and fire, and they do both. So that was why I decided.
Is it scale?
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. And I I do have a security background. I worked at a security company for five years when I was back in Wisconsin. So and I actually was talking with my old boss a little bit too. I was going through all of this. So it will end up saving two hundred and ninety dollars a month just in monitoring fees and phone connection fees once we make the switch. So it'll take us a little bit to recover the money. It's thirty-four months, I think it was, when I figured it out. So I just needed to find where the money is going to come from and then.
In the event that something does happen. You don't have to. It costs you.
Yeah, right now.
Or either not being approved or whatever.
We can hold about six weeks worth of data right now, five to six weeks worth of data. We'll be able to do at least twelve, he told me. Depending on how the cameras are set. So we'll be able to hold a lot more data. And then just the other update I had is that we're two months into the new system. We we're kind of working through all the processes and the bugs with the new PO system. It seems to be going very well. It's really nice being able to actually tell where our money is and how we're sitting with our with our budget, because we haven't had insight to that before. So.
Yeah, and I will say, you're sitting on just about your six month anniversary.
The eighth, yeah, it'll be six months.
So congratulations.
Thanks. I made it that far.
And just from what, from what I've seen, you've come in and you've done a fantastic job. I think you've expanded what was probably in the job description, which is probably the norm around here. You come in and you have to wear a bunch of different hats. I think you've been able to do that with, you know, without, you know, any say so whatsoever as far as pushback. You know, you're doing whatever it takes to get the job done. Everything going above and beyond your responsibilities. So congratulations and thank you for that. The one thing, just as we're talking about security, let's get out here. Are we still on a padlock, a combination?
Yeah.
Can we not get a punch key or something that's maybe up to the century for convenience? Very expensive. You want to wonder if it's a game. Let's just get something where you just punch it, punch it in, get in, not having to do a combination and. I mean, it can't.
We can look into.
There's not a frequency. I'm sure we can spend the money to to get better access to our main administrative building.
And we put manual one or a visual one? Like a manual.
I'm still.
Get a combination.
I do a padlock, then it's saying it's on my kid's bike, you know? So, again, the amount of equipment things we have in this facility, I think we can probably get an automated for some some kind of like it's a little easier for staff to use.
Okay.
Wait, is it difficult? I mean, I'm not negative. I'm sensitive to spending money. If we've been getting in for fifteen years, if we're talking a hundred bucks, nothing to it. If we're talking ten thousand, whoa. I don't know. I had no idea. But what he says is expensive. I've seen his prices. You can trust it.
It's expensive. Let's see, bring it back. We'll go and see.
Okay, I added it to the action. Any other questions? I have to go plug in. I'll I'll be listening from my office.
Good afternoon. Leslie Richter, Utility Billing Manager. I'm just going to go over a couple of notes. I am working on updating our year end reporting totals, where I'll provide some info on our annual totals regarding everything in utility billing and comparing our usage for Lee County. I'm also working on a credit card feature that will help automate some things with regarding to maintaining and auto drafts, rejections. Our current credit card merchant does offer that, but we're also comping pricing with other banks to see if overall we can get our fees lowered on that as well. The customer information form that we mailed out with our billing, we've received just under four hundred forms back. And so far, out of a hundred and fifty, we've touched every single one of those has some type of customer change. So I think that was good to roll that out. We have a revised hydrant meter application. Tony did take a look at that application. We're looking to roll that out. If not this month, next month, I will include it with the agenda item as an info only if there's any questions on that.
What is that?
Those are meters that are, when pressure washers want to rent a meter, they attach it to the local hydrants, and they use them to either pressure wash roofs or driveways.
A timber meter for billing them. Now, I get it. Thanks.
The only other thing and end with this, the Lee County Cares Act for those residents who are in need of assistance with their utility bills. Round three is just started this week. On average, we have about five, maybe five residents a month that actually apply and take advantage of that service. Other than that, we we're not getting much kickback in regards to late fees or shut offs. So any residents that is going through a COVID situation, we encourage them to contact our office, and we'll provide a payment extension.
Leslie, have you, um, we've had even just in Stony Brook over the last couple of weeks, we I've heard of some cases where the water billing was a lot higher than their typical usage. And those individuals have called here and and first it was you might have a leak or, you know, something. And I think eventually it's gotten worked out, but are always seeing, what's the frequency of of users calling in that their bill is a lot higher than than what they think it should be? And it actually ends up being, you know, something other than a leak or something that's actual usage. Have you seen it, calls positives, or I don't know how we would we would state that. But is that something that occurs frequently, or is that just something that just happened to be? What have you heard? Have you seen?
I've heard of that. The more of them has been a problem with a hose or something, and people just.
Overfilling the pool or something like.
Or an irrigation leak or. Leaky toilets, that's a biggie around our neighborhood.
So is that an issue or just something I just have to pick up?
Uh, no, that's that's a normal occurrence for us in regards to every, once the bill cycle has been released, we'll have those customers, who the majority of them have leaks, which we've notified them majority of the time. And some may be seasonal residents, some may have not been aware. Some may be irrigation high users. So we do average about eleven to fifteen calls a day. So we do count those. We keep track of those as well. And we do have some that may be affected. If we weren't able to get a read, we had to do a manual read, you know, those those occur as well. But that's all of a routine process with our billing cycles.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
Leslie, can you tell me what is the transaction fee that was that was implemented in in twenty twenty that caused a decrease on our on the records?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
What is the transaction fee that we charge residents for credit card payments? Looking at a decrease of almost fifty percent of residents that were enrolled in automatic payment from eight hundred to five hundred, what is the actual cost of that fee?
The fee is two dollars or two, I'm sorry, two percent or two dollars and ninety-five cents per transaction. And that amount is calculated based on our average total amount of bills and the total amount of customers that actually pay by credit card.
And is that, this is in the credit card, the merchant fee that that we get and we just pass?
Correct. Correct. So on average, the typical bill is just at a hundred and fifty dollars. So that's the the threshold that we we roll out.
I mean, I I would imagine we would want more auto pays.
Correct. And then and given, and then I guess I'll maybe I'll report into the the three hundred customers that are now paying by check or they're just paying still by credit card but not auto pay? Because I guess my question was, is the fee for auto pay or for any credit card payments? That's.
It would be any credit.
The fee is for any credit card payment, whether it's auto pay or if they pay one time only. The majority of the majority of.
Electronic fund transactions, checking out. That's seamless and free.
For us, the action went backwards.
Well, the average like that, you know, at one time they started signing everybody else's credit cards to not have delinquents and missed.
But it's different between credit card use and direct.
Directly, yes, are free.
Right. So credit card, you're going to be, right. So I think the question should be, there's a reduction between eight hundred and five hundred for credit card payments. But how many of that?
Shifted to.
Shifted to just a different type of.
Yeah, land on.
Right. So do we have any way of knowing how many total accounts are on some type of direct pay? As opposed to.
Yes.
Actually credit, right. Because that's what we, that's we want to look at the percentage of total. Where do those three hundred go? Right.
Right.
Total.
Yes, we keep, we keep. Yes, we keep, we keep track of that as well. The majority of those customers have gone to auto pay, so through their direct bank.
It's not a negative, yeah.
Right.
That's a good question, I'm glad to pop that up. Anything else, Leslie? Anything for change? Find a way, get out of the 40 today. Leslie. So now we're on Brian. How it works?
We had a few things, we did some repairs at the pool on the gates. They've been kind of hit a few times and banged up. Smith fence came out and kind of adjusted them. They're not new, but by golly, they work now, so, which is a good thing. Because we already have a hard time trying to close the pool gates up there. Whether a garbage truck hit it post long time ago or something, but it was off. Pool guys like, can we get fixed? So we had Smith fence come out and kind of do some repairs without spending a lot of money. But now we're good to go, it works.
Is that a padlock, Brian?
I was good, I think.
Yes, it is. Master key, do you want one? I have plenty of them.
There's a master key on padlock, you said, but our padlock is the.
You're a rip the life stand, too.
I wanted to get into the padlocks. Maybe we did two for price of three or something. I still recover, so. I lost my health.
Keep your blood pressure down.
That was some pictures of that. In addition to that, we had a young man in the neighborhood named Mikey Collins that is in part of the Boy Scouts, was going for his Eagle Scout. He lovely flagpole you notice when you come in. I invited him up here today, I guess he couldn't make it, I know sometimes he works at their school. But I will present the word to him, I know where he lives.
That's right, have you guys seen the, the body, it's wonderful? It's beautiful, yeah. And we were trying, I think, one of the reasons why this was actually put over by the.
It's probably better out of the weather towards that.
Yes, we're the, over by the sock field or somewhere else, but we're probably get noticed more. But again, it'd be in the weather and all good, but it's really nice. And I do also want to compliment, I don't know who it was, but moving the, the flagpole actually into a location that's possible now.
Give compliments, that's a glen, because I did glen handle that.
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll thank staff.
Due, due to the, where it was located, the trees and all that, we took the old scoreboard down. That was rotten and fell apart. When Matt Tyrell's over here on the lake, had a nice machine, that's if you just yank it out. So we did that and had the flagpole moved down and just relit. I had an electrician Billy to.
And at some point, you know, maybe we talked, put some landscaping around there, they did with this. We don't have, you know, honestly, we, there's not a location in Gateway that has any location for veterans or any place where you can go. We do it in St. Louis, we meet at the, at the flag at the very top, but there's not any here. So I know that a couple of years ago, it's probably like five, two years ago, there was some conversation between myself and some others about putting up a monument or something. But maybe that might be a good location to put something. We might about find, you know, stuff, organization that might want to spearhead something. But it would be nice to have something, the flag is pretty, I appreciate it.
We'll, we'll see what we've been living into. As far as the hot wire, I don't know where Chris kind of mentioned earlier about the road damage of a pelican. I was called for Paul from Hot Wire when everything kind of gets hit over there. So we went and looked at it, they were going a direction for, they were pulling it back. And unfortunately, the board had got stuck under the road. Because when they put some water in there to try to get the board to break free and water was coming up 20 feet away into the road. So you walked across the blacktop, it was like a trampoline. So we ended up peeling out, they hired Ajax to do it, probably about a 25 by 80 foot section. I said, before you do anything, repay me a back or get in a professional to come out and do some compaction test because we feel there's a void under that road if the water was coming up from the bottom. They were only bored three feet deep, but we had water coming out 20 feet away from where they were born. So I got ahold of Bone S. we used and they referred me to Universal Engineering. Brian Clark, I rode with him the other day, he's a licensed PE and they're going to go out do some compaction test on that and give us a sample where we're probably getting Tony involved with Lennar because we had to find out what their samples are and compare it and make sure that road is suffice before they have to fix it because it does not have a final lift. So it'll give you a week or two for, I guess, probably about a week till I get the results back because he hasn't done it yet, he's supposed to do it tomorrow. So that is in the agenda. A few things, you probably noticed a tree on the ground today, it's my ranch last night down by Stony Brook. We'd be removed tomorrow. I guess somebody at 2:00 in the morning decided to make a mad dash and do a ranch, your old neighborhood. Heard they found him by helicopter, but.
Gateway Boulevard?
Yeah, Big Royal Palm took it hard. He flattened it with a pickup truck. We went and broke it off at the bottom. Seriously, I mean, he must have hit him 50 mile an hour because it really shattered the tree, nearly off, pushed it out. So we dragged it down the sidewalk, it's between the sidewalk and the street now, then mainscape is going to solid up tomorrow morning and take it out.
Was Gateway resident?
Don't think so.
Oh no.
Probably worse than last week's.
It was on the news. As far as the roundabout, what Chris did mention is they have tore the electric out more than once, twice now for the streetlights. So when you get phone calls at nights, the streetlights aren't working tonight, so don't panic. Once the trees are removed, it'll be rehooked back up tomorrow for the weekend because it was easier to disconnect the power this time, have them yank the trees out than to put it back in. Because last time they took them three days to play around that electric, they still left it out. So it was like, let's just make it easier, disconnect it, do what you gotta do. If it's good, we'll hook it up, if not, we'll replace it with no. But that's all we have from the public works side.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, along the lines of public works, maybe appropriate, Russell Smith is here from Lennar. And I explained to him that the Arborwood document should be at the next meeting, December 17th. Russell just wanted to mention to the board what they're envisioning, I guess, from the standpoint of the type of piping.
Well, yeah, just to refresh your memory, Russell Smith with Lennar for the record. Last time we were here, we talked about the crossing from Pelican to Arborwood across the Fort Myers right of way and that the crossing would need to be hardened in some way. And this is actually as much as that indirect to Tetra Tech, who I think is on the phone.
Yes.
They specify steel casing and ductile iron pipe for that crossing. And I'm wondering, based on last week's conversation, if that specification will be adequate for what we discussed last week or if they would like to do something further than that and see if they could opine on that here, you know, just so we could figure out if we're on the right track or not, so.
So I guess the question is to make sure the engineers, make sure the design is sufficient.
Yeah, for, for the board's satisfaction and Tetra Tech satisfaction across that right of way.
So we have three, three pipes, I understand, going across this stormwater, a 10 inch potable water and a four inch sewer force main.
I think that's right.
And all of those are the cast iron or ductile?
I believe so, Tetra Tech's on the line, that's their spec, so I would.
There's two of them that I don't have a major problem with, but the storm sewer.
I don't think it's, I think it's irrigate, maybe reuse irrigation, not storm sewer.
We don't have to reuse.
No, I'm pretty sure, hey guys, this is Steven. From my recollection, I can pull them up real quick and get, you know, accurate information. But I think we just told you guys to put the PVC pipe you guys had, you know, on your plans in a casing, you know, for when in the future there may be a road there that, you know, they can just easily replace the piping through the casing. So we didn't specify ductile iron force main, I'm pretty positive of that.
So I, I think what it comes down to is, is at the resolution of the last board meeting was just so that the district's utilities were as protected as possible crossing that right of way. Is there an enhanced detail that you would recommend? We're happy to follow whatever. So I guess what I would say is, is just make it clear to us, don't have to do it right now, but just make it clear to us what that is and we'll follow it. And then the agreement will come back to the next meeting on the 17th, we've read it, I think it's fine. And so.
Okay.
Case would buy.
Yeah, whatever they, just, you know, whatever they say.
But storm sewer though, I've never heard of such a thing.
No, 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 the storm is not in a casing, the storm is just RCP.
Say it again, I didn't hear it.
No, the storm is not in a casing, that's just RCP.
Okay, I see.
John, I, I guess, if the board measures direction, then Tetra Tech will have part of the agenda packet on the Arborwood Phase Three, the detailed plans and specifications, so the board knows what's recommended. Lennar's on notice, you know, Brian's happy, Kenny's happy and Chris is happy. With what is proposed, to try to look out for the future 10 years. So when Fort Myers comes through and goes the road, district doesn't have to spend a ton of money.
Is there, is there any time system towards this in the hour?
On the summer 17th, if we can.
It's okay if it's on the next.
We're on the next board meeting, have a formal agenda item and that's. Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to, with Tetra Tech here and all of you here, we sort of discussed it last time this way. Everybody's on the same page when we come back next time. So see if we can take that away and have that, have that passed along. We'd like to have that part at the next board meeting. I think we're talking to Tetra Tech. Steven?
Rest, rest a couple of things.
Hey, sorry, I was on mute there. We're good, I mean, we're satisfied with the plans as is.
Could not understand what you said.
You're, you're good.
But we're, we're good on our end, we're, we're satisfied with the plans as they are right now.
At the last meeting we were here, I mentioned to you the, uh, it's in the pond. It's now come underneath the golf bridge and it's making its way toward the Gateway Golf and Country Club.
I'll tell you what, I'll leave here and drive right over. I, I, I sent our association people to look at it and.
I'm gonna get a boat, pick it up and save it because it's very expensive.
I will, I will, I will drive over there right now as soon as we're done here.
And then the other one is, is that, the, have you guys got any pictures or anything that everybody on the gateway side is, is like this was a, happened overnight? And I said, what part have you not read of the discussion of Arborwood Phase Three? They're trying to figure out that they showed, sending pictures of the guys delaying the sewers? Nope, everybody thought that was going to be wooden wet room forever. I mean, if you're reading the gateway next door, it's, it's crazy going on. But what I saw that I didn't understand is I saw what heck of a lot of de-watering. Weird result, I mean, huge de-watering. And I imagine you're pretty deep on your sanitary sewers, where's all that water going?
They have to keep it on site, I mean, they, yeah.
I thought they might be using it to fill the new ponds, but it didn't look like that's where it was at.
No, they, they, and, and I'd have to check specifically, but they have to have a de-watering permit from the Water Management District in order to do it. They all, and they make them almost always retain that water on site, so.
I thought that was the case, I couldn't figure out where it was going, but it is tremendous volume.
I think it's probably not going anywhere for right now, I think it's being retained on site.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Next up, so it's actually, we're into items. Uh, you want to talk about the board?
Sure, and I have this, we are going to have a board planning workshop to discuss priorities and basically provide the board with an exercise with the list of priorities they can add them. The board can rank those priorities themselves. And also the staff is going to present their priorities to the board and part of the budget for this year and some of the concerns we have with the budget. And also this is, will be laying the groundwork for the budget next year. And we're also planning on taking this information that comes from this workshop and putting it out to the residents on the survey monkey and also survey in the utility bill to get feedback from them on what resident priorities are. And also the fact that maybe some of the projects we have coming up and looking at what their appetite would be for an assessment increase to pay for those, you know, looking at some of those big ticket items. Rehabbing the irrigation system, repaving the trails and pathways. But trying to get some feedback to come back to the board just to have some data to drive some of the decision making. We talked about having this meeting on the, at the next board meeting. And we've looked at doing it in the morning or we could have it at the regular board time at 3 o'clock and have a short action agenda item to address a few of those items that are time sensitive. Specifically, Lennar requests to get the plat and that agreement approved by the board. There's a couple of other items we brought up today. And so that meeting would be same 3 o'clock. We could start it with a short action agenda and then move into a board workshop. And we're looking at about an hour and a half for the board workshop.
And this is part of a conversation that we've been having around, I think we've done a remarkable job recently of getting, getting through board meetings within a reasonable amount of time. So the idea, mostly, even outside of this, this next year, but for us to look at having, out of the two board meetings a month, one would be really an action meeting. A standard board meeting like we would have with committee reports and everything else. The second one would be a workshop, which is very similar with you today. You know, with the second meeting of the month, we have a workshop. Normally it's about an hour, then we have about an hour and a half, you know, meeting. The idea would be to chisel out 30 minutes as an action, as a, to leave it, so we started meeting with, with the action items. We had 30 minutes of a state of meaning, so if there's any, anything that needs to be approved that's time sensitive, we, we have that. And then the majority of the meeting, about an hour and a half, would be a workshop. We can have open discussion, which I think is so needed. And had that kind of our objective goal. So we still have two meetings a month, one would be primarily action being, the second one would be primarily a workshop. And a good way to start that, I, I like being able to start it as early as the next, the next meeting. So instead of having, you know, a board advance in the morning or somewhere else, we could just set it into our regular standard, same routine. So any comments on that?
Did you get a legitimate survey?
Yes.
Is he available for the.
He said, he said he appreciated contacting him, but he was not available.
Mr. Chairman, that helps also if you have, we're, we're meeting at 3:00 workshop. Part of it can say, have an advertisement workshop. And it's right, we have, we've already established annual meeting minutes and wondering if we have, if you're gonna workshop in the mornings to separate it, it costs a couple hundred bucks.
But what I think we would do is during our workshops, we would probably have, so. I think you probably have. Through the.
Thing I. At 9:00, you're looking at having the workshop at 3:00?
At 3:30, I think.
Just in place of our.
But we haven't advertised the meeting, 17th, so we hadn't advertised it.
Oh no, we were getting to know which. We gave it to you.
Higher. Higher.
Fun on mute, please.
I believe I'll double check.
Yeah.
I wasn't aware that the 17th was included as a meeting on that deal that we approved here.
I believe it was and the board usually says that they cancel it and it was left standing on that.
So we wouldn't say by not having to move it to 9:00, we could.
Yeah, just do a standard.
Who's putting together the agenda on the workshop, when we're gonna see it or work through it?
It'll go out like a regular board book, first part of next week.
In regards to the facilities, is Jones not available? Bob, were we able to find out the first vintage public reserve that you mentioned?
Yeah, Chris sent me a note and reached out, still moved out of Alabamis, not in the state.
And, and so I think we'll, we'll keep looking out as we continue to mature that, this new workshop environment. But I think this next go around, because we're looking at priorities and those types of things, I think the discussion would really just be, I think we can manage it internally. If you guys all agree that's, that's. Yeah, so, so I think we're in agreement that we will execute the, the workshop in the December 17th. We will allocate 30 minutes in the front half or any action items that are better critical. But that is the structure that we'd like to adopt moving forward. The second, second meeting of the month would be primarily a workshop type environment. And this is where I really would like this board's input on how, what are you really looking at in those workshop environments? How can we make them more effective in order for us to really have some open discussion? In order for us to put some solutions together. Trickle that. As we move forward. So Bill, just, just to make sure that, that you've heard that. So the December 17th, are you clicking with what we've just discussed?
Not every year.
Yeah, we'll put it, it's your house.
And I have that, I, when, I already take my trash can.
Can you just put them on mute, we'll, we'll talk about it, okay. So we'll move on to consent agenda, if there's no other discussion.
Before we leave, that was one of the drivers for the workshop, the 13 and 14 points that ended, brought up that time. Before we leave, that was one of the drivers for the workshop, the 13 and 14 points that ended, brought up that time.
Yeah. So, okay. So what, what Laura's done, she's not here, but she, she's worked with staff. So we have our, our existing priorities. We have updated staff priorities. And she also went back through the, the, that meeting and all the items that we had kind of called out during that.
I'm here.
Uh, Laura, are you here?
Yeah, I'm sitting at my desk.
Yeah, will you just, uh, can you, can you just update the board on what you told me yesterday of what you've done as far as?
Sure. Um, I, I had, um, Georgia go back through the recording from the board meeting that you guys had the last time where you listed all of your priorities and I've put them all in a spreadsheet. I sat with Brian and Kenny and got their priorities. Um, I have my priorities in there. Leslie gave me her priorities and Chris gave his as well. Um, and so that's what I'm, I'm gonna compile all of those and, and be able to present them to you. So we can see like what the board priorities are and what staff priorities are, what we have budget for, for this year, what we're gonna potentially ask for budget for next year. So we, we're kind of all on the same page.
When, when will we see that document?
You'll get that with your board pack. I'm still working on it.
So we'll get it, we'll get it by next week. So we'll have.
We're getting it next week.
Is that, everybody comfortable with that? Yeah. Okay, great. Thanks, Laura.
Yep.
Uh, moving on to consent agenda in the, uh, in the, uh, full. Do I have motion to, to accept? Motion to, to accept, is it consent agenda items A through C? Do you have a second?
I'll say, look, I have a question. The detail on the LCSO for 2021, that's in the budget right now?
Yes, sir.
For that 50,000 bucks?
Yes, sir. And that's, that's three nights a week.
All right, Saturday.
Well, it's Friday and Saturday and then one weekday night that they rotate. So it's not the same night. And, and they're typically, uh, 11:00 PM to three in the morning. And they patrol the entire community.
Supervisor comment about that. We have a motion in a second. All in favor to approve.
We're trying first right as long.
No, uh, A through C. Is that correct? Mr. A through C?
Yes.
Okay, I had a, uh, question before we make.
Okay, we're still in discussion.
When the financial report did October 31st, and I've had discussions with Stephen Blue about it. But it had in the Pelican Preserve portion, a looking for it right now, scrolling, came up too fast. Waterway management, mighty waterway management. Money carryover prior years and it had, it was 370 some thousand dollars. But anyway, in talking to Stephen, that was variance with what we had done with an internal Pelican budget. And, uh, so he agreed that number would be higher, reduced. Reserve capital, as it's called under the, uh, it's a reserve capital. Anyway, still be at 375,000, it's probably gonna be somewhere between 50 and 70,000. So it's a significant enough number that I wanted to make sure we're aware of that. There's not as much sitting there and it's first blush, they thought. We knew we overspent, Pelican knew they overspent in 2020. And we've been waiting for the, the carryover number in the next year so we can make Laura's budgets correct too. So other than that, I'm okay.
And that's all the reserve funds?
Yes. That's what it was, reserve pot. Is it 375? Yeah, the actual number's less than 75,000, it's probably more than 45,000. Anything else? Don't. Okay. Uh, Doug.
I just made a correction. I double checked. My calendar doesn't show the meeting of December 17th. My secretary took the data, put all the meetings on there. So I'll double check that if there was, he had placed for the 17th as part of the Pelican. And he's not, we're writing the paper.
Uh, so I have a motion in a second to approve consent agenda items A through C. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Uh, we move to supervisor, supervisor comments. I will start ladies first.
I just have two questions. Um, the, the meeting signs that we used, I think this was Brian and Chris, the meeting signs for the district, uh, do we still have those?
Yes.
Can we start putting them out there?
If you'd like, we didn't know if, uh, it made a big impact and it certainly gets in the way of the mowers and the landscaping. But if you're, feel strongly about.
Like a pocket area, uh, there, there will be not on those rolling areas. I mean, given that we have the same two, three people, I think anything would help to encourage residents to come in.
Well, and I think one of the things that we should probably look at is, I think it's way more convenient to go sit in your house, uh, download to our Zoom and watch the meeting from home. So maybe, uh, putting a article out in, in, you know, one of the local papers or, you know, publicizing to the HOAs, you know, to send something out to residents, reminding them that it's, it's easy, more easier now than ever to attend a board meeting just by sitting at, at their computer at home and downloading. Because I would much rather have residents participate at home than have, than even have them come here. Not because I don't want to see them, but I think it's just more convenient. More people will, will click the link. So maybe it's just us classing how you can attend the meetings.
Maybe we can put that on the billing, where they can add that to it as an invitation.
Our Facebook page.
Or then.
And we should have a reminder that, you know, on every board, every Thursday we have a board meeting, there should be something on our Facebook page. A reminder today's meeting and here's the go-to meeting, you know, information. So it's more about just driving our communication strategy.
And then the second thing, I just want to question about the monument that's on the center median of Gateway Boulevard and Daniels that is damaged. They halfway into the bushes, damaged, there's no lighting. I think it says gateway, right? Uh, Brian, the one that's.
The first one in the.
It's almost to the point that it might as well remove it because it's, it's horrible. It's an eyesore.
What is that? About Daniels?
I'm turning off a gateway into Daniels. It's right there in the bushes. There are little flower sections around.
Yeah.
Right, the red.
So it's, it looks like maybe it was a, an accident happened and you hit it and.
It's in the center median?
Yeah.
It's a little bit. He went his way.
So either looking to repairing it and if the cost is too much, maybe just removing it.
You say, look, I think it's worth.
It's small. That's all.
Mr. Single? Yeah, I've got a second. Uh, first, uh, is Steve Blue on the, uh, line?
Yes, he is.
Yes, I'm here. I'm here.
Hey, Steve, uh, for this workshop, one of the things we're gonna be talking about is, uh, plans for next year. And one of the issues that holds that up is money financing. Are you going to have put together a, uh, an analysis for us of a bank loan versus SRF? And what the differential will be in the ramifications of if we would go with a bank loan instead of a SRF loan?
I, I certainly can. Um, I, I hadn't been tasked with doing that yet, but I have no problems doing that or working with staff on that.
We're gonna have a discussion about that. I don't know how we're gonna have any kind of logical discussion without having good numbers. We're looking at quite a few, uh, thousands, millions of dollars to be spent, not only on lake banks, but also on, uh, uh, water and sewer needs. And it sounds like that SRF is going to be out of money for possibly a year. So, uh, rather than sitting back and doing nothing, uh, from what I'm reading, these bank loans look as, almost as attractive as the, uh, uh, SRF. Uh, and either way we go, we have the issue of the, uh, what's the word, told, uh?
Ballocation.
Ballocation. So if we're going to have a ballocation, we're gonna have to get into that pretty quick to make this happen.
Or to the lake payment restoration program, we've all did it.
We're good on this. Correct.
Any kind of problem.
But on the other projects, we haven't done anything. Correct. Okay. So Stephen, if you could be doing that and then if you had questions on numbers, give it to Chris as far as what the projects are that are identified that would fall in this category.
Okay, understood.
The next item I've got, uh, real testy. I received a copy of an email from Jim Waznuski that he had received from staff. And then he wrote back and responded. And for the life of me, the letter that we wrote him on December 3rd, I, I guess it was this morning. Where and on earth is this coming from? Doug, I think you, were you copying? Yeah, you were copying on this. Good morning, Jim. Normal littoral lane is such a stream and controlling winds, keeping pond outfalls rains, open removal of nuisance exotic vegetation does not require perm, removal permit. Complete littoral removals from control elevation down in any pond will require an eighty vegetation removal permit per pond from Lee County. Okay, then he held that company. I'll let's see that in writing that says that. If we had stated this up, there needs to be some, uh, discussion with that staff member. That is, I don't believe that can be true whatsoever. Never has been discussed before. We are not in a position to begin large scale removals. There are steps still to implement budget for including permitting large step and shoreline. Yeah. The reason it's not budgeted is because we didn't put it in the bid and that was a staff error. I asked for an amendment to put this in pursuant to the, uh, pond standards that we approved earlier last year. It was just ignored. I agree with Mr. Waznuski. I think the ponds committee needs to be reactivated. And this time get some people that know what the heck they're doing when we'll put this together. This is ridiculous, but staff cannot be sending out letters. They're making this stuff up unless they get something about it. Comments?
No.
Yeah. But there's no rebuttal from anybody on staff or management saying, Doug, sorry, this was wrong. Where this come from?
Brian, do you recall the last meeting, like I looked up the, I was at the function, but I was in, I was, and it, it's all. We had somebody from Lee County. Was it Jessica?
Actually, he's sent it to Jessica three times, last three. Mr. Waznuski has sent this three email three times to the county. Want pretty much those littorals over Silver Lakes done. The ponds that he's requesting, we have removed littorals from behind his house. Those are done. He's requesting others. It's not his to make that decision. This letter came in, he basically sent it to the county. She kind of, after the third time, sent it to us and said, can you kindly reply to Mr. Waznuski? We did.
She said she's, she who said this?
Lady from the county.
Lady what?
She's the head in charge of natural resources there at the county.
Okay, name?
Asking us to address this issue.
Well, the reason I'm asking is because when we've been doing the pond standards for as long as I remember, this has never been an issue. Never, ever come up as an issue. The only thing that we have talked about and the pond standards talked about it until odd, odd event item was following the development order. And that's what we put in those pond standards. And we were supposed to go out and do this work to follow the pond standards, which is inclusive of removing vegetation that's not in the littoral zone on the ponds. Back to the, I couldn't believe eight to 12 foot.
Jessica Salzer's name.
And we did the Jessica Salzer?
Yes.
Get Jessica Salzer to give us a letter to that effect. That will freeze over first. She says stuff and she has no idea what she's talking about and she won't put it in writing.
I think it, I, I, I.
We've tried to confer before.
I can type this. I can see the email. It was in writing because there was a follow-up to that, to that meeting that we had. Um, and, and I, Brian is correct. It was a lot of back and forth, uh, requests from Jim. And, and at first, Brian, we, we, you know, correct if I'm wrong, but he wanted to remove it. He wanted not only to petition for his property, but petition for all the other residents. And then the Richmond email was, you know, each resident was petition for their own. You can't combine it all. And then his response was, I'm trying to make the job easy. It was, we understand, however, that's not how the pond standards were set up.
So what, what, what we're wanting him to do is that he is trying to, uh, let's say facilitate a group of people. We need to have them endorse his deal of signing up on it.
Well, what we need is each individual homeowner, because what happens is him and Justin go around each neighbor and try to get them to move it or not. We've educated some of these folks. Once they find out what's really involved and what will grow back in its place, like, oh, wait a minute, I really don't want that. Well, they weren't educated properly because with documentation from University of Florida, it kind of explains what happens when you remove certain littorals and certain plants that need to be required that are on DOs. Problem is with Mr. Waznuski's pond is it's on the list to be rehab. It has some serious issues with slopes not being done properly.
For one reason, staff just wanted to put together the proposals for the ponds and that was, was rated in the third phase, the least worst project we have.
Well, we have, we have removed everything from behind his house. It has been done twice.
So our, my, my question is, are we removing littorals when residents call in and ask for them and they're not a DO related issue? That's what the pond standard.
We have so far went into Hampton and thinned that out and spent almost a hundred thousand dollars to take care of that issue.
Okay.
We've done some in Silver Lakes, like Mr. Waznuski's. We haven't done it massive yet because we're waiting to take off now that some of the water will go down. Because what happens is littorals follow water. We all know that it goes up and down, but we're going to implement it to the 12 foot. That is on that, the county specs are 20 feet wide shelves. We're down to 12. And that's what she told me basically, and I, she's in writing, there's this 20 feet, our shelf's 12. So it's gonna be a little more to maintain. Our new contractor starts in January on this.
But the new contract has nothing for credible.
And we've been over, like I said, we've been right now, we've finished up over in Hampton. I got some great comments back. They were happy. And Silver Lakes was next on our list.
Okay. The same complete littoral removal from the controlling elevation down in any pond will require an eighty vegetation. Can I have a copy of whatever?
It's in the contract.
I'm sorry?
It's in the contract that was written to the pond proposal.
No, no, no. She's saying that this is came from Lee County.
Well, I have to get it tomorrow.
I've never, I've never heard of such a document. We haven't asked about this for at least five or six years and I've never heard that. You know, if we're putting documents out, I want to make sure that they're factual, not to our residents. This one here was pathetic when I read it. This is absolutely not that. And then complete littoral removal in any areas, not a part of normal maintenance, is not included in search flood or management contract. And curvature does not have the funding to implement this work. Well, let's figure out why. It's because we left it out of the project. I was due once, I won't be again if we start talking about pond standards. That was the joke about that. It was a flat lobby and staff. I don't buy it. Just don't buy it. Going on. I always got an email this week and I, I was a little taken back by it, especially from the fact that I, for 40 years, did this kind of work. What's going on and what is precipitating these emails to our engineering firm about billing? Somebody would help me with that. Everybody else get that letter?
Yes, I do.
I thought it was a poll. Our staff has no more right to be sending that letter. A man in the moon. That is a board job, not a staff job.
Believe, and I can ask Laura to comment, but all the items that you could see that she was requesting are all in their contract to provide, billing the two tenths an hour detailed descriptions. I got involved in some of it when they asked me and I said, well, I want to get a bill for an hour phone call and it says, phone call an hour. But who did you talk to and what did you discuss?
Is this the issue? And I don't have a problem with that.
The issue is there's, there's not enough detail in their billing to quantify or even justify any type of audit. It's just, it's too gentle and we can't isolate, okay, where that's coming from. So we just need more detail in there, in the little brackets, like Tony does.
Okay. Well, I think that's, to me, I don't know why that generated this type of a letter. It was almost a threat.
Well, I think there's, I think there's.
And I don't see that.
Tractor at all. Then it's all big roll up into, into this, this one. It has to do with.
Is, well, explain to me, if we have a contract and it calls for a contractual amount, a, a set task order, what is the breakdown? If I have a lump sum contract for $10,000 to do X, Y, Z, I never submitted breakdowns of the invoice for the $10,000 as lump sum. If I build a unit price or a labor, uh, related contract, then I had to break down what they, the work for, for that was. But I'm gathering that this was not for that, that this was special items like if I call Danny or somebody else calls Danny or if something comes up that there is a question, this would fall under a miscellaneous billing. Is that what we're talking about?
Okay, it goes, it goes across the board for, uh, those, those functions under task orders, because even under the various task orders, the work that they do. They did, you know, working on the plants for the roundabout. on the plans for the roundabout permitting, you know, those type of things, and then all we're looking at is, you know, the other things kind of the general engineering budget.
Well, I guess my question is, is that, are we getting an invoice for an hour, some of these time, or two hours, or whatever the deal is? And it doesn't explain at all what it's for, or is it lacking in specifics? I've not seen any of these.
Let me ask the question the same thing. Let me ask the question a different way, because it struck me as, as awesome. But I chose to look at it this way, are we attempting with, you know, Laura's new position to have her more fully have a reporting structure? You know, and that's what came, you know, from the pods and the budget, and I'm certainly okay with that. And if that's the way we're approaching Tetra Tech and Newark County or anybody else, would it not have been a, a better way to do it, to say, as of this date, February 1st, 2021 or whatever, from here on out, here is a new report on how we would like you to report, rather than challenging a bill that had come in in the past, in its normal fashion for the past 10, 12 years, and if, you know, it had always been acceptable, why is it not now? I'm okay with improving, I'm okay with stronger reporting structures, but these are our, our team, in this particular case, and if we don't want that to be the team, then we'll change, get a new team, but it is a team, so if we're changing the playing field and reporting mechanism, give them a little heads up, and ask them to critique, or, you know, is what we're asking for reasonable, do they have an alternative way of, of proposing? And just do it cooperative, if this did not look, look very adversarial.
I'd like to see, and this is the first time I've seen or heard of a discussion of issue on an invoice, I've not seen an invoice from Tetra Tech that would even rise to the level of coming to the board who retains Tetra Tech, retains Tony, for that matter, I haven't seen an invoice from Tony, I haven't seen an invoice from any of these people. And we're, we're the ones who hire them, and we're the ones who should be challenging this.
Well, I will tell you, I see all the invoices.
I, I send them over for probably Mr. Gettler.
This rose to the occasion, like Bob said, if it rose to that occasion, I would think that somebody would have walked to us, a copy of this invoice and say, hey.
We, we have a problem.
We have a problem.
So let, let me summarize here, because I, I, I do think that it warrants discussion. What I don't believe is that discussion needs to take place today, because I think there's some other things that need to happen between staff and our engineering firm in order to strengthen that relationship and, and really build more collaboration. I do know there's probably 10 or 12 items that, that staff has called out where there is either opportunities, or where there's been some maybe repetitive pushback on, on that Tetra Tech in order to, you know, drive, maybe it's more accountability for some of the tasks that we've asked.
Well, it sounds like, excuse me, it sounds like you're knowledgeable, something that I.
Yeah, I'm saying, I'm saying.
What do you think about?
Well, we're knowledgeable.
Something I don't know anything about.
I'm knowledgeable because we had a meeting with staff yesterday, so this was brought to my attention.
Why did a letter go, I mean, this, I'm sure it's over this.
And this is, this is what I, this is what I said to staff yesterday, if there's, if there's problems with, with a vendor, there's challenges, we need to know about it before this type of escalation occurs, because we have no history. So this, we're all cutting up lines a little bit. I think with Laura's, and I applaud her for the email, because I think she's doing her job, which is holding our vendors accountable, and adhering to practices that, that we, that we were setting forth. Now, to say that, well, this is the way we've been doing it for 12 years, if you, if anyone on this board is happy the way we did business 12 years ago, or even three years ago, then that question.
No, 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 just try to put that comment into our context. Whoever has been submitting a document for 12, 15.
And you change it without any notification, not understanding what you're saying.
It's never been challenged, and that's the problem.
Well, what's worse is the fact that it's the personnel's every, discussing it, and we're the ones to hire and fire, and you do all this.
Well, that's another question, are we the ones that do that? Is the staff that does?
The hell, that's why it's us.
Drawing that out.
It's the board.
Well, I think. That letter seems to me to say that you work for senior, and it struck me the same way I thought.
Well, I don't, I don't think that's the case, I think what it's saying is, our engineers report to the board, but we also, if I'm not sticking to the contract and things we've said in the past, is they also work on behalf of, of the district manager. Would anyone dispute that?
Don't dispute that at all, but I think.
And that absolute pushback on Tetra Tech is they don't, they happen to still acknowledge the fact that, that they also in parallel report up to, to the district manager in conjunction with, with the board.
Here's where I go, when I see something like this, this, this isn't smoke. This is a fire.
Yeah, we're fire.
This is a fire. And so, and, and, and I never heard the alarm, and I never saw the, the lights or the sign. So why is it, why did it have to get to here?
But I did see the 30 day termination.
Yeah. Well, and that's, that's just was totally, that letter should not have ever been written. If that letter came out from anybody, it would come out from this board and we're authorizing, Chris authorized, not from a staff.
Well, I don't know if I agree with that, but I do think what, what needs to happen moving forward is, and I, we had this conversation yesterday, with, with staff, that we need to figure out, and have some conversations with our, with our engineering firm on how we can.
Well, I'd like to see, I'd like to see, because what, what sounds like to me is somebody from staff is going to bring in, is we want to get rid of our engineer, that's what I'm hearing.
No, what, what I've heard is, staff needs more collaboration and partnership with, with their engineering partner. So that, that's, that's what I've heard from staff. Chris, would you agree with?
I'd like to see a copy, how long is this even going, because it sure sounds a little bit long.
Well, actually, we, when we initiated the new purchasing system and also the budget, the district engineer and the district attorney's budget were reduced significantly under the general tasks, and with the new system, we can track those costs and, and keep a better handle on it. So we started working with the Tetra Tech before the new system went into place, and it's actually been going back and forth for a couple months.
But my, my question, Chris, is that, I, I did this for 40 years, you have contracts and half a dollar value, are we talking about the contracts, or are we talking about what I would call additional services, to where Bob calls, I call, Ploppy would call, or Doug would call, because we have communication with both Tony, we have communication with the, with the engineer. Is, would those bills come in, because I can't picture those being, that's, that's, that's my.
Right.
So what, what is it that you all know that I don't know that's causing this kind of concern? Are we talking about 10, 15,000, 20,000 dollars?
It's just tracking on the billing, what's contained in the billing, again, you get a bill and it says phone call, $242, well, who did you talk to and about what?
But was it associated with the tax?
No, but that, this was just under general engineering.
Okay, that, that was my question.
It's never, it's, okay, here's, here's the task opposition, here's the action of exception. That's, 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 okay, that falls within scope, right? So I think we're, we're using this, this one invoicing issue, and I think that is just a small piece of what is driving the frustrations with staff. So I think what I'd like to do is.
Well, this was my business, I'd like to see.
Well, let's have this workshop.
Let's see, I'd like to see what they're doing, because everything I have seen, everything I've heard that they are billing is exactly the way I get it up.
So I think it's a little, it's a little, why, everybody's a part, this, this small piece of frustration, definitely, yes.
Chris, I, I feel like this is not the first vendor that we, that Laura has done this. I think staff is looking at every single contract without, but I know that they had a meeting with, with Mainscape, right? So this is not, like, it wasn't Tetra Tech, let's go for them first, they're actually going through a process and we're doing all the vendors, I'm not aware of that. I was aware of the steering over there, so it shocked me when you told me you were not aware of this. But I think that is something that, that staff is going through every single one of the vendors, and I don't know if they're doing it all at the same time, or they already went, I know at least three that they already went through, this is the fourth one, and questions very similar to that were proposed and errors were found, and I believe one of them, credit was issued back to us correctly. Yeah, so I think she's doing a good job, it may not be smooth and, and it could be done better, but I think it, it was not, I don't think it was a direct attack or what intent to go after Tetra Tech and say, hey, by the way, look at this, you know.
Well, there's a threat of termination, believe me, it's direct, I've been on that side of the fence, it's direct.
Well, I think that's not, that's not right to the invoices, that's, there's, there's other issues I think are driving it, so let's do this, I don't, I don't think we need to prolong this conversation, let's play it back, so you're.
Look, Doug, you're bringing up stuff that shouldn't be brought out here, I, you're saying there's no other issues? I thought this was purely an invoicing issue, are there other issues?
I, I think there are, there are other issues that are.
Well, why is it worth remembering that, I mean, I've been here four years.
So are there any issues?
No, not a word, nobody's got to me, nobody's said a word to me.
And that's, and that's part of the.
Did you know issues?
I, I.
Where'd you hear it from?
Yesterday.
Where'd you get it from?
From staff.
Why didn't staff tell me, tell me issues?
Well, I had staff meeting yesterday.
My number is 2395619809.
Well, this is all like that. It's part of the conversation I had with staff yesterday, is if the board does not have.
I'm trying to say.
But listen to me.
This is a nice night.
Give me the floor, one second. What I told staff yesterday is if there are problems with vendor, there are challenges, then staff needs to, one, work to, to build it, to enhance it, fix it, whatever, but also the board needs to be helping, because if we're, we're not aware, then we can't help. And I think the board has tried, or the staff has tried to work through these issues without bringing it to board's attention, which isn't the right for staff, right? That's what we talked about yesterday.
No, that's how I got to the five bar and fired.
Yeah, that's what I did about it yesterday, because we just talked about.
But, but.
But I didn't know of it before.
But you, but again, the issue, I'm talking about monetary issues right now, because that's what this says. I'm getting the impression from you, though, that there are other issues of the.
Basically, their conversation yesterday.
What are the other, what are those other issues beside monetary?
I think we, I think we pull that forward in the workshop, and, and matter of fact, we just have Laura.
Sorry, I'm not going to go, I'm not going to go to that workshop and not have data to know what's going on.
So there should be some refresh.
Somebody sends something to me showing me what the issues are.
And I would say, for each of us to set a time to talk with you, Chris, I'd say, let's talk to you, and provide some, some individual conversation, and have, have that come through, and there'll be a book, there'll be a packet that'll come.
Yeah, I might, I'll see what the issues are, and if, if it's with our other vendors, then somebody, if they're doing something wrong, doing something wrong. But I, I draw a line a little bit when I start talking about Mainscape and Aquagenics and our, what I call construction-related vendors, and my professional vendors, there are two totally different issues.
I don't disagree, so there needs to be more, we need more transparency into interaction between staff and our vendors, and when there are challenges, we need to know at the point of where that, those issues start, not when we have to send an aggressive email.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just, just two points, one is, I think the board's discussed, only the board has the ability to terminate these contracts.
Yeah.
I mean, the implication, I got, I saw that too, implies that that can be done other than by the board, but the board has.
Well, I just, I didn't interpret it that way, I interpreted it, here's, here's your termination clause.
Right. But I think that should not be done. But secondly, I think that part of the discussion ought to be obligation of both sides. I don't, I don't represent the board, but for example, there's a prompt payment act in place, the prompt payment act says if you're a vendor and you give an improper invoice, the entity has to tell you what corrective action to take. And I don't know if that's going on or not going on, but once again, it's, I've gotten as much as, you know.
You don't know nothing. Mom, did you know about this?
I think we didn't know anything.
Well, I need some.
How did you know?
I, I haven't, I haven't sent you my notes, Scott, I dressed.
Right, we have it. Right, issues?
Yeah, I mean, have you had any?
No. Well, the only problem I ever had was permit criteria, and I know that was that, it's getting the board to prove.
Well, I, I'd like to see a little bit more transparency, this, this is, this was very upsetting when I read that, having been on this side of the fence, somebody should have been told, and somebody should have been us, we should have seen invoices saying, hey, this is what we're getting, and because of Tony revising, advising me quite frequently, you got your problem with this stupid sunshine, so we can't have phone calls, we can't do that. So the only time and only place we get to have and show our skirts, what's under our skirts, is right here, right now, and that's just the way it is.
Well, and that's on, that's on the staff.
You wrote so many laws in that last statement?
Well, and that's at some point for staff updates, to be.
Or else personal information.
It, it's more than enough, when it, when it gets, has accumulated to this point of this kind of frustration.
Yeah.
Is way beyond, it should have been brought to us a lot earlier.
I think we've actually turned the corner on that, Mr. Take the, where we've had some discussions, and even Danny saying, well, let's put this over to Steven, because he's primarily the project manager, and, you know, we'll adhere to these standards, so.
I, I'd just like to see the example of what's got to the order of this frustration on billing, but what quizzes me is, what else is there that I don't know?
It may, it may be helpful too, and that included in that board packet every month, we have the engineers invoices, and maybe the attorneys invoices there too, so you could look at it.
I'm all for that, I'm all for that.
Yeah, years ago, there used to be, different, in agenda, all the invoices, all of it, no, got, yeah, so board, once again, board, they don't record with me.
Well, let's, let's, let's think through that a little bit, we, I, I think we need transparency to do the invoices, but we don't want it to get like.
Yeah, we don't want it to go back to what it was.
So, okay, we have, there's, there's need for more conversation around that, what else do you have there?
That's all.
Okay. You killed my five o'clock.
You didn't think you're not going to back to center.
It took me to the second need.
Well, I'll go with you and then Bill, and then I'll wrap up.
Well. And, and, you know, since we're, we're being so amicable right now, there was a personnel related issue with Glenn's vacancy in the department, and I got some emails and some phone calls, and I know almost everybody else, I haven't heard how that's moving forward or not moving forward, and I certainly don't want to air that in, in public, but I don't really, I'm new to this, so I don't, how do we, how do we handle things like that?
What are you talking about?
Your company.
What are you talking about?
Using my Glenn's.
We had, we.
Go ahead and, with staff.
Yes, 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 yeah.
Now, I'm aware that there's another person in that area under, in Brian's group, that had a concern, and now, now she found out that, that one person.
Well, that's the, that's the monetary issue.
Yes, yeah.
Well, again.
But again, I mean.
We, we can't talk about this, we play some forever, but my, my deal is, the first time I saw that, is I called Tony, right off the bat, said, I have been in on this before in a business, and you can get your butt in a lot of hot water.
Same experience.
Staff.
I don't, I don't see any detailed conversations of public session on that, we.
That's just, no, we just conversations.
I'm just saying, how are we supposed to, how are we as, as a board supposed to resolve these types of issues, or are we? Well, I, I think, I think we might be appropriate in this case, it's just like a management attorney report to the board as, as personnel, and that, we had conversations with necessary specialized counsel on this matter, and just. Well, my issue with the guy.
Are you talking about how are we going to decision, the employee asks for an adjustment of salary?
Correct.
And I guess, how do we follow up with the employee, is it Chris's decision to have that, or is it Laura's decision to have that conversation and see if it's a worthy of a salary adjustment, or is it something that Chris and Laura put it together, come to the board, explain that to the board, and ask the board to make a decision on that? I did see the emails they were talking about, the only concern that I did have was, I believe one of the emails from Laura said that if the position and locally, you know, pays above what she's currently getting, then it would, you know, it would be a problem.
I would suggest not having any more conversations about that, the nature of the details of it. Again, as I understand from a personnel, employment, and salary perspective, my understanding is that the board hasn't passed, delegated to Chris, he's ordered to do the hiring and firing of all personnel, my recollection, is that, your request.
Typically handled at the staff level and.
Staff level, and then Chris is to advise the board of any actions he's going to take Staff level, and then Chris is to advise the board of any actions he's going to take or has taken in that regard. And to the extent that there may be people trying to assert claims against the district or whatever practices, I would suggest not to have any conversation during this.
Well, that was what bothered me. The bottom of me was, the payment was not, it was the threat of something else. That's what bothered me.
And if anything further, I have to advise the board.
And that's where part of our staff, and that's where I think Laura's been working with, you tell me, and because we don't have, that we have an HR person.
And Suzanne. Suzanne Boyes.
So Laura's been working with Suzanne.
Yeah, and we've worked with Suzanne, and I've worked with her before also.
Suzanne, that's a risk for us. And I've called that on several occasions, the fact that we don't have a dedicated HR resource or even someone that's, you know, we remind us of someone that's accountable for that, that may be trained. Which doesn't want trouble.
Definitely, I read my business, I only had forty, fifty employees, I didn't either. So I really, I rely on that term.
Right.
But when I get to a hundred, under fifty people, then I can't assign anybody in that position. But there's demand that we go to on anything this way.
Exactly, and that's, that's with Laura's. That should have been the first call.
Yeah, and then we contacted Suzanne, so Suzanne and I and Laura have had conversations regarding this issue. What else, I guess, I know in the past, Infrom, whether you liked it or not, just it was dependent, when ST, now Infrom, they have an HR department, they have a huge, well, they're an international organization. And so what about the building wants to, in addition to their administrative roles from a financial perspective, also say, hey, we want to utilize your HR resources also. Or the board member wants to say, let's keep it in-house. That's a board policy decision, the board can make. But Suzanne Boyes represents Franklin, her two other attorney slots, that's all she does is label and primarily representing employers. Worked with Suzanne before, she's very talented, so we will keep you apprised. Okay, that's really, the premise of my question is, is it being handled? Is it being addressed by them and other contact people?
And what I would say on top of it, and this, I actually have it in my notes to bring up, it's part of our staff updates. We should have a portion that's your staff openings and updates. So if you have a vacancy in your, within your group, I think each week or each board meeting, we should say, hey, and by the way, I've got two openings on my team. Here's the status of those. Oh, we recently had, you know, a termination. We don't have to get into the details of that, but I think that way at least the board is up to speed on what's happening within staff. Because a lot of times, something happens, like even with Glenn, I wasn't aware of the details of that until, you know, until a little bit later. But, so I think that'd be a way to keep us, again, because we're getting emails, too.
Yeah, and also the board members can be individually briefed. I mean, that might happen also. I think that would be appropriate.
And I think that's appropriate, yeah. So we'll work on tightening up a process around updating on staff concerns to the board. Yeah, Bob?
Okay, that's all. I do, I've asked staff to give me the update on the three remaining pond restoration projects that are coming forward because I want to look and see, you know, who's something I might be able to contribute there, suggest.
Right. And Bill, anything from you?
He is not online.
I've got just a couple of quick things. So I talked with, had a meeting with staff leaders yesterday. And they do, they do, some of the staff meeting has been kind of a sacred meeting once a month, I think. I've asked Chris to augment that to an actual staff meeting. I'd like for, to open that up to the board members, for us to maybe rotate each month and have a different board member attend that staff meeting. They do like a lunch, they address safety and just different updates.
I like that.
I think it'd be a great way for us individually to at least get in touch with that, you know, every, every once in a while. I had mentioned the, bringing back the HOA advisory committee, which is basically the presidents of each HOA having to come back. We did it several years ago. So Chris, if the, if the board is supportive of resurrecting that president's advisory meeting, HOA presidents...
It would be an HOA council, and they form it themselves. I mean, it's supposed to be a board-created entity because then you weren't the sunshine. The Pelican Reserve, we have a president's association.
Yeah, I, what I thought was HOA advisory...
If you do it, is you going to do it for Gateway and Pelican or Gateway Home?
I think Bob made a... That falls within HOA within Gateway. We would invite each president or their proxy to meet once a month with, I guess, who else is able to attend that.
Yeah, he and Bob, they were president's associations, so it'd be more...
We may have that far away right now.
Yeah, I think you send that, you know, oversight advisory, a great way to get their feedback.
It's a great communication.
Straight line of communication.
It's great because things come up that never would have come up before. And this way, the Pelican Board is aware of that feedback.
Who attends from the, from Pelicans? Like you have a...
All the presidents or the proxies attend. Castle Management and the community association is there. And I would go whenever things about odds or things that happened.
Are all your associations under one management firm?
No, no, the whole...
So each one of them have their own camps, individual camps?
Yeah, but we, they... They couldn't have...
Who could attend that from us? So we'd have staff, so we'd have staff present, which would be Chris, and then one more. So we can either, definitely nominate, to be the sponsor or liaison.
Or do the same as you were talking about, rotate.
Rotate.
We probably have to have one, so you know what the issues are.
What are you, what are you trying to do and what do you want to accomplish with these things?
Communication.
Just communication.
Communication, where is that?
Because I have to get their issues. What's coming out, what we know, just be aware of it, we're going to change.
Let's just say, for example, let's say to the pond state.
Maybe this will... Fuck, asshole, fuck.
Everyone's for that. It's going to be a six o'clock.
Maybe you want to throw that grenade in the, in that HOA perspective before we bring it back to Amelia Pond's.
Get reorganized on right now.
Well, that grenade's not going to hurt anybody because it's dumb.
It's amazing, it's going to come up. Like, you know, how are we going to be at the guardhouse for emergency stuff like that?
What are the biggest, because I read, and I said, beginning of the meeting, people just, they have no clue what's going on. They have no idea that there was a roundabout going down there at Commerce Place. No idea.
And that's a way, great way.
I mean, that's unbelievable.
So everybody's, we're here with the rest of that.
Yes.
So Chris, help us socialize that with HOA.
Another reason why that's good is, Mr. Tickle sort of hit on it, but I see it all the time with community issues, because you have turbo progress. They don't understand. So the district versus the association, they think, or the county and the city, they, they just, they push them all together, and they don't understand the boundaries.
They didn't have any trouble understanding the fact that we overbuild them seventy-five blocks. They picked that up real quick.
If you're a president's council, you should encourage the presidents to communicate with their residents. And Pelican Reserve, that doesn't happen.
Well, I think it's part of the, it's encouraging the president to disseminate down through their camp.
Well, I don't want to go to the north.
I'll tell you a problem about it. I've learned that, or in my other path. This association or this district, we have to give the, what do you call it, email addresses out. It's not public, it is public information. The HOAs tend to not. And so consequently, we've got a lot of people that will not give us email addresses. I've got fourteen hundred hours. I've got probably five hundred legitimate email addresses. We have all kinds of things going on. You tell me how you communicate with fourteen hundred people when you can't email them. I've got people calling, well, you've been calling. I don't get paid for this, people. We've got all these communities.
If you want information, you have to...
Better blood of root.
If you want information, you also have to go and help look for it, too. And then are people going to do that?
How about maybe the invitation from you, and maybe you will be the one to meet, you know, the presidents for those HOAs for the first time around? And get a feel for it. And then maybe, you know, not every single one of them will want to be represented, maybe they can appoint.
They should be surprised.
And, you know, we all met, so maybe you should be the one that first to get with them.
All right. You're going to marketing person that knows what they're doing.
I suggest coffee and bagels.
Same problem.
Yep. Okay, let's keep going because I've no...
The marketing guy will put the locks on the bagel. That's the problem.
So one of the things I want to, I want us to kick around a little bit is, you know, we've talked about, we've got the sheriff's detail come out to address different issues during the week. We've got problems with other areas, let's say, like within the sporting complexes, the soccer fields during the weekends, you know, things of that nature. I'd like to keep it tight a little bit on whether we feel building our own security detail within the district is something that would be viable. And HOAs have...
We haven't had it through yet. It's a special power under the act, and it was proved, I think, many, many years ago.
I'll go back and double check. There's no policing story.
That's correct, the access controller security. And lately, for example, lately, the development district has their own roaming patrols in their cars. And they have them painted in similar colors, the shirts, and the shirts don't lie. It's not like the market has access control in the public.
You can't issue a bond. What do you do?
You report and you coordinate with the, the department, works out really well, for example, in lately, a lot of roads are county roads and public roads, but these patrols are always out there looking for, like, if there's somebody loitering around an area, or if there's an accident, or they get reported.
They got it, I think.
Yeah, I don't want to be John and Run Cloud, but right now, we've done that over in Gateway Greens, and we pay them twenty-five thousand dollars a day, the LCSO. And them wanting to follow and come in and do this stuff is like, I don't want to touch that with a ten-foot pole. So a lot of the things I think you're going to find that you want to have coverage on, Lieutenant Sheriff's Office is going to come back, I got people getting murdered across the road over here. You think I'm worried about that guy that's coming in and playing soccer?
Yeah, I don't want, I don't want Gateway Security.
I'm going to create, I'm going to get... The problem is though, the force brings you to get asked to go down.
Well, yes, I think some of the problem that I've seen is, we hire sheriffs, it's, they're, they're deterrent based on their visibility. They're not writing a lot of tickets. They're not even enforcing, hell, when these towns come out to different areas, they don't even want to write tickets.
That's right.
Want to force people to do anything. So it's not like their enforcement is driving value. What's driving value is the fact there's a lack on top of their car, and they're dressed in apparel that has some type of intimidation. If we have a vehicle that was Gateway Security and, you know, maybe just a security, whatever, driving around Gateway Boulevard, maybe we're going in and out of some of the community, circulating the park, that control alone might be enough. Like, the fun part, if you just had somebody that comes through there with lights, two lights, a blue light, if there's something going on, people are going to get out of it. They're not going to pay attention. I'm sorry, what, what industry are you, whether you're sheriff or you're just a rent a copper? I'm not going to run away unless I know you have, they're not going to do that.
What I'm suggesting you want to do is, the manager of lately, C D, kind of represents the way the community of the district, and they have roaming patrols. Which is also helpful, and they have generated reports, each one, they provide them, they put them in the reading board. But if there's a disabled vehicle on the road, they'll stop, put on cones, put on flashers and...
And they don't experience as well.
Hey, do you need assistance? And they'll call, they'll call the MS, they'll call the SO. They can't issue fines, but there are another, they're roaming around all the time. And the colors on the cars, they're white cars with the green and yellow, like the SO colors.
So I'd just like to look into feasibility. So Chris, if you or someone can stand, maybe you can, maybe you reach out to...
Yeah, you know what, Neil Dole. Sorry.
I don't, I know a couple of people that live in there that I can ask.
Oh, and now they, Neil Dole and Kevin Carter, or Kevin Carter.
Securitas has a roaming patrol in town.
We agree, let's just look into it, see. So Chris, we can just look into that. The other thing is, as we're going to, you know, we still have more ponds that we need to restore. But we also, and we're going to come out of this workshop, we're going to find there's still a whole lot of items that we need to address. You know, we find them every day. You can grind out a laundry list, and it gets bigger and bigger. And we're fortunate right now that something seriously has to happen with the irrigation system. It can be a matter of days before something explodes, and we, we got to spend millions of dollars to break fix, and we don't have any, you know, any way to fund it. So my, what I'd like to do is, you know, we haven't really had a pond committee throughout the whole time we've done these ponds. I'd almost like to resurrect some type of committee to look at the remaining ponds, to determine the design of those. Again, where have we seen value engineering and work with staff and work with our engineers? Is the design that we have today, is that the appropriate design for the remaining phases? Are we still planning for a thirty-year fix? Or at this point, do we need to reduce some of the funding and do maybe revise renovation plan that might just go through ten or fifteen years and then come back? And I don't know whether it's a rock to layer. I'm only saying, we're going to have to find money somewhere. Maybe, maybe an area to do that is revising how we're going to address the remaining ponds. I'm not saying that we do anything different, but I'd love to have somebody at least being devil's advocate in our, in our existing design.
Well, we've had several professionals come in and nobody's come up with one yet better.
They kind of, but I, I think at this point, we're going to have to, money's going to be tight for the next couple of years. And we're going to have to spend millions, millions of dollars, either we have to borrow it, or we're going to have to assess for it. And if we're assessing for it, we're talking about twenty, thirty percent increase in assets.
Assesses is just foolish. If you've got things, you've got ten, fifteen, twenty-year life, you borrow it. You would never...
I mean, we could really get in debt, you know, everything.
Well, this is why I wanted to do this analysis, because I think you're very close right now to when you say the SRF is hurting for a year because they got to get money back until... A bank loan, it's not that far off right now of what SRF looks. So the money is there. It's biting the bullet to whether you want to do it. I thought the staff and Tetra Tech were putting together with remaining, what, Brian, twenty-seven, twenty-seven, twenty-nine ponds? They were reevaluating those for priority, which ones have the most need, so that we, if we have ponds that aren't bad, put them at the bottom of the list. If we have ponds that have in the last five years progressed, put them at the top of the list. But I haven't heard anything of where that's, where that stays, you know?
We gave a list to Danny, basically the three ponds that are carried overs going out the door as soon as the weather ponds go down.
Yeah.
We revised, gave them a list, what we think should be added to the bid.
Should be on that.
Be on that for the sixty percent plan for the next go-round, which we know won't happen now, probably a year down the road, because of the money. But we re-prioritize what we thought staff did, the ponds that need to be done next.
Well, a lot of people out there in the field, especially in Gateway Greens, are asking, when are you going to do my pond? And so I think that priority needs to be done.
But now the problem is, is you only got money to do three ponds. Is that well carried over?
We only have the SRF funded, three, but we have money. You can go to the bank and borrow the money. The issue is, what's the bank rate versus the SRF rate?
Well, and that's what I think, too, it's coming down to, if we don't have as much money, if we don't have thirty million dollars, you know, sitting around. But there's ponds that need to be addressed. But do those ponds need to be addressed the same way we have addressed the first twenty? Does Gateway Greens want stone? Do you need, you know, are there certain complications we can make in order to make Gateway Greens happy?
Doug, it's not, it's not an answerable question. You can't ask it that way. Because you're going to get people who are non-professionals that have no idea what the hell you're talking about.
I'm not asking them that.
The issue is, we have looked at, and I believe it came up, we started with the stone, and the stone was on the ponds that were very serious. Then we went back to a combination, still using the stone, but instead of using the Armamax, we dropped back to the filter fabric where we didn't have as bad a deal. It doesn't make any difference what you're going to do. If you've got slope and/or if you've got the bank drop on, the scar, you've got either one of those. Tell me what you're going to do that doesn't require fill, and how do you keep the fill in place?
So that's...
That's the sixty million dollar question. Right now, we have not come up with anything that keeps the fill in place unless you put a fabric on it. And the only way to protect the fabric is you put stone on it.
So let's just validate that. And if there's, you know, I think we've got some ponds that have played long enough that we can go back, say, okay, looking at the ponds, they've been in place for two years now. What, you know, is that solution viable? Are there things that we're having to address that maybe we didn't think about at the beginning, like replacement or, you know, weed control or different, whatever that is? Is that still the right class? If it is, great, let's continue to move forward. But if there's value engineering somewhere, or there may be some other opportunities, then I just think we should look at it.
I'm all for it, but we've gone down that road, we have found it.
Okay.
We haven't had anybody show us an...
Our complete support. So the last thing I have is, I just want to circle back with staff again. So what we want is, we just need updates on, on staff. How many openings, what's the opening shot today? If you've had any terminations or people leaving, just update us on that. And based on the conversation we had yesterday, what I'd love for you guys to do, bring back in the next meeting, is any modifications to your staff plan? So if you've got one opening today, but you need two more in order to really facilitate your work, then I want you to update the board on what is your staff plan that you need? And then any materials. So if there's vehicles, or if there's something that, you know, tools or something that you need in order to, to get your job done in the areas, just bring that back so we can, so we can, we can assess it. So an updated staff plan, any material needs, and just a continuous update on your current openings and any viewers or whatever reasons.
Is there a published staff meeting once a month, once a week?
I think they're, they're looking to revise the staff.
Is there something?
Yeah.
Is that distributed after we can...
Yeah, so we're planning, it should be, they don't reoccur. Like, they have a safety meeting today, and I'd tell Chris just to modify that to staff meeting, because they're probably bringing staff in. They're doing basically a staff meeting today. They just, they'll just revise it, let's know the schedules, and we'll alternate. Yep. Anything else? Okay, I will call this meeting adjourned five thirty.